And we're going to kick off by also recognizing that May is National Historic Preservation Month, which is really a chance for us to reflect on our history and development. And so here to kick it off, I want to introduce Corana, and she has a brief presentation for us.
Very brief. But you know, they say a picture's worth a million, thousand words, whatever, so here we go again, as Renee just said, this is National Historic Preservation Month, and we are delighted for the second year in a row to have several of our nonprofit preservation partners and property owners working together to have a week full of activities, and we want to thank the mayor and her staff and all of you for your help and support. First event is this Saturday, and we're going to be exploring an area of town that I don't know that much about, and it's been really fun to learn about, the South Van Ness Industrial Area. This is an area rich in Armenian history, fruit packing, streetcars. We're going to be going into a former speakeasy. And this is cosponsored by Alina Foods and Baskin Mechanical Engineers. They are businesses housed in those buildings, and they have been very supportive, great guys. Next Friday, the Great Architects of Historic Fresno is a scavenger hunt. This is using your smartphone to run around downtown Fresno and find neat things, and it was a really fun trip last year. This is sponsored by Fresno State University and the Warner Center. On Saturday, May 10th, the Historical Society, the Heritage Fresno and the City of Fresno are working together on a walking tour of our downtown New Deal buildings, and there'll be photo exhibits and book sales and free food, free refreshments. Right after that, we are showing the interior that's been completely restored of the Helm Home, thanks to the Fresno Housing Authority. Gorgeous building, 1902 Mission Revival. And last but not least, the Mukes Home folks are having their annual Mother's Day tea, so we hope that some of you will be able to join us for any of these events that celebrate our very rich cultural heritage.
Right, thank you. Why don't you stay and please join us? (applause). Madam Clerk, if you'll read the proclamation.
Whereas the month of May is National Historic Preservation Month, an annual celebration sponsored by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and whereas cities throughout the United States are planning activities during National Historic Preservation Month to promote education, pride, and tourism, and whereas the Fresno City Council adopted a historic preservation ordinance in 1979 and found that the city of Fresno has played an important role in the development of California, and that this history is shown today through archaeological sites and through buildings, structures, objects, sites, and districts representing commercial, industrial, socioeconomic, and political agriculture development of the city. And whereas the theme for this year's National Historic Preservation Month is "The New Age of Preservation: Embark, Inspire, Engage," and whereas the city of Fresno is collaborating with several nonprofit organizations on a series of events for the first full week of May to promote awareness and appreciation for the region's historical heritage. And whereas the following groups have worked collaboratively with the city to plan these events: the Fresno Historical Society, the Fresno Housing Authority, Fresno State University Humaneics Program, Heritage Fresno, Warner Center for Arts, and various property owners in the South Van Ness Industrial District. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Ashley Swearingen, do hereby proclaim May 3rd through the 10th, 2014, to be Historic Preservation Week in the city of Fresno, and I congratulate the city's preservation commission and all the organizations who have joined together to promote our history and cultural heritage.
So on behalf of the mayor and the city council, congratulations.
All right. Next is the proclamation of Peace Officers Memorial, that's also from the mayor's office.
Good morning, council president, members of council, and the community. Today, we're going to honor the men and women of law enforcement, and we have special honor on May 6th when we take time to remember those who've lost their lives in the line of duty. For a lot of us in the community, we really don't know what the individuals of law enforcement have to deal with each and every day. Sometimes what may be nothing more than a, looks like a traffic violation could turn into a very tragic incident very quickly. You're walking up on a police, not a police car, but on a car with darked out, with blacked out windows, or you're reporting to a domestic violence call, and fortunately or unfortunately, as the city manager chief does a very good job of informing me almost on a daily basis of what the men and women of law enforcement are dealing with the night before. And for most of the community, it provides us a sense of security and safety because we don't know. And because we don't know what we don't know, we do feel safe. And I also know on a personal level, this chief, as well as his command staff, his entire command staff, are constantly looking and worrying, and I mean worrying, this guy, this guy takes it right here, because he is concerned and worried about what his officers could run into each and every day. The investment in the training center, which was this chief's idea, is an investment in the safety, and not only to provide the highest quality law enforcement, but also to provide the officers with the tools to be able to react to situations, so we don't lose one of our officers in the future. So today, we're taking a little bit of time to acknowledge the contributions, the commitment to the officers, but more importantly, to the family. We all come to work every day, no matter what we do, but we have a pretty good idea that at the end of the day, we'll come at home. The families of law enforcement don't necessarily have that level of security. So I'm going to hand the mic over to the chief, but on behalf of the mayor, the council, and the community, we'd like to take an opportunity to thank each and every one of you for your contribution to our community. Chief?
Thank you very, very much for your words, Bruce, and for the mayor and the council, your recognition of this day and next Tuesday, and for all of you for that standing ovation. I think all of us sometimes in our jobs feel, don't feel as appreciated we would hope, and that certainly is a big help in terms of showing that appreciation for the men and women of the Fresno Police Department and all of law enforcement. My number one goal as a police chief is to never lose a police officer in the line of duty, and that's easy to say and hard to keep, that promise. And it is because of the training that we're able to provide through our regional training center, it's because of the equipment that we're able to provide to our officers to keep them safe, the staffing levels that are so important, as well as the direction that they receive and the information that we provide them timely. And I've had the unfortunate opportunity to be in the emergency room many times, more times than I wish to remember, where officers are lying there fighting for their life that have been shot, officers that have been in near fatal traffic collision, and it is the most eerie feeling you can have as a police chief when you feel completely helpless but totally responsible for those individuals. And so I want to say thank you to all of you for your recognition. We live in a great community, and I am so thankful to be the police chief of the city of Fresno and to be the police chief of these men and women that sacrifice their life on a daily basis, and the families that oftentimes stay at home and aren't certain whether or not their loved one's going to come home. So thank you, and God bless you.
Clerk? If you could read the proclamation.
Whereas the mayor and the city council of Fresno acknowledge the sacrifices made by the men and women of law enforcement in Fresno County who lost their lives in service to its citizens, and whereas the President and Congress of the United States has designated May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifice of the police department, and that members of the police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against their oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Fresno Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, and whereas in their honor, they will be celebrated at 12 noon on Tuesday, May 6th, in Fresno County Courthouse Park. And now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the council of the city of Fresno, do hereby call upon the citizens of Fresno to observe the week of May 11, Sunday, May 11th through Saturday, May 17th, as National Police Week, commemorating the law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so has established themselves as an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Be it further resolved that we call upon the citizens of Fresno to observe Tuesday, May 6th, 2014, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in Fresno, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courage deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in their performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
Counsel comments? Maybe Councilmember Baines, because you've walked it, and I think you can probably help also add a few insights to what an officer faces every day.
Well, I really can't add more than what's already been said, but I can tell you from a very personal place that coming home every night by far is the number one goal every time you put on a uniform, by far. And chief, I don't have any idea how you go to bed every night with that obligation of, you know, ensuring that to this community, but I know my number one goal was to come home. And it is a devastating thing when you're, when you lose a fellow officer anywhere in the country, really. It's a devastating thing. The hardest things for me were actually watching videos of officer fatalities. It was just, it's an awful, awful thing. So this day is very important to remember that this is the first line of defense for our city, and that the men and women of our policing agencies really just want to come home at the end of every night to their families, their neighbors, their friends. We, you know, we're like the military, but we, you see them every day, so it matters very much. So I'm so very happy that we did this proclamation today, and of course, as every other year, I'm sure I'll be there on May 6th to celebrate that day. But thank you to the men and women of Fresno Police Department. Thank you, chief, for just a great job, for the size of our agency, for the size of our city. Listen, it could be a lot worse, so thank you, guys.
Chief, I'd just like to agree with Councilmember Baines, and we really appreciate you as the council of the city of Fresno, and we get to interact with you personally more often than we do your people, but we'd just extend that to your whole department, how much we appreciate everything you guys do and being out on the front line. And so I just want to thank all of the officers that are here today. Tell your colleagues that we really appreciate it, and we thank you for all that you do. All right. Bruce, I think you're staying down there, and I'm going to join you, and we are going to do a proclamation for the Lance Cashin Company. It's their 50th anniversary day. We're going to be joined by Tracy Cashian and Eddie Arrakellian, I think that's correct.
Okay, thanks for being here. We just, for those of you, probably everybody knows your company. Lance Cashin Company's just been a foundation for the city of Fresno, doing fantastic projects all around our city and almost probably every district. You've got great projects going on and great projects completed, and so we just appreciate your commitment to our community. You do more, you do more than make money, you give back to our community, which is really important to us. And so we just wanted to celebrate with you today and have this proclamation, and so we're going to have our clerk read a few portions of the proclamation, and then we'll give you a chance to address us, okay? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Whereas on April 30th, 2014, Lance Cashin and Company celebrates 50 years of doing business. Founded in Fresno, California on April 30th, 1964, it has become one of California's leading real estate development and management firms, while being on the cutting edge of sustainable and intelligent building practices, earning gold or platinum LEED certifications on many of their existing buildings, and continues to look for ways to improve the green initiative. And whereas Lance Cashin and Company, led by Mr. Edward M. Cashian, has played a significant role in various projects throughout California in the real estate development, assets, and property management industry. Whereas Lance Cashin and Company has fulfilled its corporate responsibilities and citizenship by partnering with many nonprofit organizations, agencies, and local, state, and federal governments in order to move Fresno forward. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council do hereby proclaim May 1st to be Lance Cashin and Company 50th Anniversary Day.
You know what? I'll have Bruce say a few words, and then if you would.
Thank you. I think one of the things that kind of frame the Cashin brand is the quality of the projects that your company builds, whether it's an industrial site, commercial, River Park is a good example, but there's a myriad of other projects that your company has developed, managed, that you didn't necessarily develop, but they're quality projects, and the properties that you guys are responsible for are not an eyesore. They actually complement the neighborhoods that they're located in, which is a compliment into the community. When people come in to wherever it is, and I can't wait to see what Fancher Creek looks like, we're south, and Sal's probably can't wait for what Fancher Creek's going to look like either, but nevertheless, they're quality projects, and they are in some respects an indication of the community. Developers build things all day long, but when your company builds something, we know it will be first class, and it does represent this community in a way that complements us as a whole. And Ed couldn't be here today, but I've had the pleasure of working with Ed one-on-one, and tell him from me, you know, there's times where he says things that I may not want to hear, but there's things I need to hear, and I appreciate his forthright and his just honesty in what he feels is important to his community, and that's reflected by the fact, and the fact that we are also celebrating Historic Preservation Week, the recent investment in the historical rail building downtown, and his vision in knowing that downtown is on, is on the turn. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for recognizing our 50 years in business. It does mean the world to Mr. Cashin that, you know, a little bit of what he does is recognized. He does build from his heart. He's never built to just leave it and walk away. He's always cared about everything around it and near it, and, you know, he's not done yet, so there'll be more to come.
All right. Tracy?
Bruce and I are going to be working together, so we're staying down here. We're going to do our quarterly pride presentations. We do this once a quarter to recognize, to recognize the outstanding employees of the quarter that work for the city of Fresno, and we get to talk a little bit about them and celebrate with them today. So we are going to get started. I'm going to hand this over to you.
And the clerk will be coming up with the certificates in a moment, but yes, as the council president indicated, when you start hearing about a lot of the things that these individuals do, they are a lot of ways the unsung heroes of the organization, they go above and beyond the call of duty, and they're, the great thing about this award is that they're nominated by their coworkers. This is something that the people that they work with have looked at what these folks do, and it's their way, it's our way, the coworker's way of recognizing and saying thank you to those employees, because it is appreciated, appreciated. So with that, city clerk, get your microphone and get you dialed in.
Okay. Can everybody hear me all right? We're going to start with the city attorney's office with Raj Singh Padja. Raj joined the city attorney's office in 2012 after beginning his career in private sector. Raj has all the required qualities that are essential for employment with the city attorney's office. Of course, he's smart and professional, he's willing and enthusiastic team player, and he works hard. He takes the initiative on projects and is always available as a resource to other attorneys. Raj also brought a very tangible, very sense of community and cohesiveness to our office. He organizes team lunches and infuses the office events with a sense of humor and provides a positive attitude and always looks for ways to include new members in our office. He is a valuable member of our team, and we are delighted to have him as Employee of the Quarter. Yeah, yeah. The next group is a collaboration of departments, city council offices, city manager's office, clerk's office, and the person who we're recognizing this month is Kyle Loretto from District One. Kyle, are you here? Kyle is a complete team player and needs to be applauded for his work ethic for District One. Kyle has many duties working for District One, but one stood out as the most, that he has helped many business owners in District One promote their business through social media, resulting in a successful grand opening. Kyle has helped facilitate several collaborations between District One and District Three offices which share a border in the Tower District. Plus Kyle was fun to be around and makes a mean nut bread. All right. Next out of the DOM Department is Howard Lacy. Howard has been with the city for over 11 years. During that time, he worked in a variety of assignments. Howard has consistently functioned at a very high level. He is extremely adept at his job and goes above and beyond to help others with training, teaching others how to do their job the best, and he has conducted a number of onsite training sessions in the field, as well as training, in-house training for his peers. Howard is extremely deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Howard, and thank you for giving your all every day. Next, we have out of the Finance Department, Renona Sawalsky and Janice Denman. Multiple nominations were received for this two-member team for the Finance Department's Employee of the Quarter. Janice and Renona, this twosome, without fail, ensures the city's vendors get paid every day quickly and efficiently. Accounts payable truly consist of only two people, and at all times, no matter what, one of the member of the team is always present on the job. In spite of illness, family commitments, or other outside pressures, these two work side by side to ensure the department citywide submit their vouchers and abide by the city payment policies. Regardless of what has taken place at the city that is negative in the press, the press coverage that the city receives, these two remain calm, pleasant, and thoughtful throughout their demeanor, and are diligent in ensuring that the necessary and essential supporting document are complete and accurate. Over the past 12 months, they have processed in excess of 80,000 transactions and fielded hundreds of calls. Laverne and Shirley, Thelma and Louise, Lucy and Ethel can hold a candle to Janice and Renona.
Janice whispered in my ear, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, we've got to check what we're doing right now, we've got to go."
Okay, from the Fire Department, we'd like to honor Jason Moore. Jason, are you here? Engineer Jason Moore is a newly promoted engineer who takes tremendous pride in his work and completes his assigned tasks with excellence. Jason is gifted in many areas, including multimedia presentations and film, and has assisted the Training Division with audiovisual expertise over the years. Most recently, Jason was part of the film crew who created a premiere video for the rollout of the Regional Rapid Intervention Training Program. This training was crucial for the firefighters as it addresses how to respond to events a firefighter needs to be rescued. Jason currently worked on a project that involves an aerial video via a remote control helicopter, which he built. This footage not only tells a story from the unique perspective, but it can also potentially be a valuable resource for an incident commander. Congratulations.
Counsel comments? Maybe Councilmember Baines, because you've walked it, and I think you can probably help also add a few insights to what an officer faces every day.
Well, I really can't add more than what's already been said, but I can tell you from a very personal place that coming home every night by far is the number one goal every time you put on a uniform, by far. And chief, I don't have any idea how you go to bed every night with that obligation of, you know, ensuring that to this community, but I know my number one goal was to come home, and it is a devastating thing when you're, when you lose a fellow officer anywhere in the country, really. It's a devastating thing. The hardest things for me were actually watching videos of officer fatalities. It was just, it's an awful, awful thing. So this day is very important to remember that this is the first line of defense for our city, and that the men and women of our policing agencies really just want to come home at the end of every night to their families, their neighbors, their friends. We, you know, we're like the military, but we, you see them every day, so it matters very much. So I'm so very happy that we did this proclamation today, and of course, as every other year, I'm sure I'll be there on May 6th to celebrate that day. But thank you to the men and women of Fresno Police Department. Thank you, chief, for just a great job, for the size of our agency, for the size of our city. Listen, it could be a lot worse, so thank you, guys.
Chief? Chief, I'd just like to agree with Councilmember Baines, and we really appreciate you as the council of the city of Fresno, and we get to interact with you personally more often than we do your people, but we'd just extend that to your whole department, how much we appreciate everything you guys do and being out on the front line. And so I just want to thank all of the officers that are here today. Tell your colleagues that we really appreciate it, and we thank you for all that you do. All right. Bruce, I think you're staying down there, and I'm going to join you, and we are going to do a proclamation for the Lance Cashin Company. It's their 50th anniversary day. We're going to be joined by Tracy Cashian and Eddie Arrakellian, I think that's correct.
Thanks for being here. We just, for those of you, probably everybody knows your company. Lance Cashin Company's just been a foundation for the city of Fresno, doing fantastic projects all around our city and almost probably every district.
There they go. David has involved in the coordination of special events held throughout the city, including Woodwood Park, Rodine Park, Rotary Amphitheater, Chachansky Park, and even some streets, city streets. Special events require excellent customer service and the ability to keep the many moving parts of the event running smoothly. Because he works in special events, he doesn't always have an eight-to-five workday. He is sometimes called upon to work on the weekends or past midnight and still show up at 7:00 AM meetings with the Rotary. David coordinates with multiple departments on events when needed, including police, public works, public utilities, and facts. He is very appreciative of his coworkers and goes the extra mile to help them if he possibly can. David is powered by dedication, a positive attitude, and lots of Pepsi. Congratulations, David, on being selective. Also in parks is Michael Sanchez. Michael, are you here? Mike has a great attitude and works well with management. Mike has a take-charge approach and is willing to take on all challenges to get the job done. He is willing to take on the leadership role to keep a project on task and complete it as efficiently as possible. Michael also takes pride in keeping his equipment clean and in good condition, as well as keeping the entire maintenance shop in order. Mike has the responsibility of managing the maintenance yard and the equipment room and improving the checkout procedure and inventory list. He is dependable, organized, and is well-respected by his peers. Mike is a great example of a parks maintenance employee who is enjoyable to work with every day. Moving on to the personnel department, we'd like to honor Jennifer Meisner. The personnel department has honored to name Jennifer as our employee of the quarter. In her current role as the human resources supervisor, Jennifer does an outstanding job of providing every internal and external customer with excellent service while serving as a role model for other departments. In addition to her supervisory role, she is also the information hub for the Employment Services Division. She has a firm grasp on the circumstances of the various recruitments, personnel requisitions, and applicant-employee statuses that are occurring at any given time. She is the integral member of our leadership team, and she is able to identify areas that are need of an efficiency overhaul. We are truly grateful to have you on our team. Moving on to the police department, we'd like to start out with David Villa Senior. David began his career with the Fresno Police Department more than nine years ago, and his experience in patrol, DCST, and SBIT has served him well in his current position as the ENPH, Eliminate Narcotics from Public Housing Officer in southwest East Fresno. David's work has included the arrest of a number of drug dealers, gang members, and wanted parolees hiding out due to living in public housing units. David is not only known by the tenants as a crime fighter, but he is also one, someone who has started the neighborhood watch programs, led tenant meetings, and provided disadvantaged kids with bicycles. In appreciation of his dedication and hard work, it's my pleasure to recommend him for this award. Also in the police department, Josh Knapp. Officer Knapp joined the homeless task force at inception in August 2013. He was chosen for his strong work ethics and willingness to take on new assignment. He came to the unit with some fresh ideas and an eagerness to make a difference. Since beginning the unit, Josh has taken on the role of team leader. He is a natural leader, communicator, and is often asked to take on auxiliary jobs to ease the workload of the supervisor. Officer Knapp's most recent accomplishment was to put together over a dozen different agencies in group focused on assisting homeless. It was a wonderful success, and the meeting received praise from all who attended. Josh goes out of his way every day to connect with people on a very personal level. Next is Lee Harris. Officer Harris has been an SOR, School Resource Officer since 2009. He spent his entire time with School Resource Unit at McLean High School. He is quick to respond to any crime or disorder that occurs on the campus. He is very fair-befurmed in how he handles any incident. It's obvious, based on his work ethic and positive attitude, that the safety of the students and staff at McLean High School is one of his top priorities. Officer Harris builds positive influence and is a great role model to the students on campus. For example, he will lift weights with the students and offers words of encouragement to them. As a former NFL player, Lee will use his experience to help guide the students down the right path and emphasize how education and staying out of trouble will help them achieve their goal. McLean Vice Principal has said the following about Lee: "Lee is more than an officer, he is part of the McLean family. Kids respect him and know that there is a line they cannot cross, but they like him to." It's a great pleasure that they select Lee Harris for employee of the quarter. Also in the police department is Spring Langston. During the past three months, Spring has worked two exemplary cases. In one case, she examined the contents of a diaper that had been rolled to imitate as though it has been used, and discovered a knife inside that was used in a murder case. In another case, a victim's wristwatch was found at a suspect's apartment during the serving of a search warrant. The watch had been taken during carjacking in a parking lot at Fashion Fair. Spring developed a latent fingerprint on the wristwatch, and the fingerprint was matched to the suspect in the case. Spring has gone to several training classes at her own expenses, including two that were out of state. Spring is one of the only three fingerprint experts in Fresno County that is certified by the International Association for Identification. Overall, Spring's experience, work, ethic, and positive attitude are an asset to the Crime Scene Investigation Bureau of the Fresno Police Department. Moving on to the public utilities department, solid waste management, we'd like to recognize Jack Wink. He's not here? Okay, Jack is not here.
No, he is.
Oh, he is here. Okay, there he is. As one of the division's waste collector lead workers, Jack has shown that he knows what it means to give your best every day. As a fellow coworker state, Jack is always willing to help, is a team player, is efficient, and works well with others. Not only does he give 100% to his fellow workers and employees, but he also gives excellent customer service. It was noted by coworkers that he is very deserving of this recognition because regardless of the obstacle, he has a can-do attitude. It's our honor to have Jack Wink presented as the solid waste employee of the Spring Next in public works, excuse me, public utilities, waste management, is Chris Vasquez. Chris here? Doesn't look like Chris is here. Okay. Right. Okay, also in public utilities, Joey Payne. Joey is a third-generation water operator within his own family. He has obtained the T3, D3 certification and is currently seeking D4 certification. His enthusiasm is only surpassed by his job performance. He represents the City of Fresno Water Division when working with Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District, Fresno Irrigation District, and the public. He is professional and has a great attitude toward his job. Joey is constantly looking for ways to improve what we do and communicates his ideas as well. He is highly accountable and is not shy about helping others in the division to accomplish our goals. Joey was selected by the California-Nevada section of the American Water Association to receive his Operators Meritorious Service Award. This award recognizes consistent and outstanding contributions beyond normal responsibilities to continue the mission to work for the greater good of the drinking water industry. Moving on to public works, we'd like to recognize Steve Delsett. We'd like to nominate Steve Delsett for the employee of the Spring Quarter. Over the last month, he's spent many hours educating us individually and as a group on various aspects of street plan checking. Steve's knowledge of the construction of streets, signing, striping, and traffic signals has ex- potentially in a very short time. We greatly appreciate the time he has taken to teach us these things, which would cost thousands of dollars at a university level, because we are becoming better engineers under Steve's supervision, and as a result, our team will be able to serve the public more efficiently. Also in the public works department is Tony Freitas. Tony has worked in the facilities management division for approximately eight years. During the time, he has been an outstanding employee and has become an important part of the facilities family. He will always go above and beyond what is needed to give the best and the most efficient service possible. Tony will work all hours to make sure the job is complete and leave no customer unattended to. Tony has such a wide range of skills, many times, customer will request that he do the work, knowing the quality he delivers. I'd also like to mention Scott McCarthy is not here today, but he was also nominated by his coworkers for employee of the quarter. Also in the public works department is Joanne Camilla. I am pleased to nominate Joanne for employee of the Spring Quarter. Joanne is a quiet, hard-working employee in this organization. Since she came to us from Solid Ways, I have had the opportunity to work closely with her on various projects and have found her to be dependable, helpful, hard-working. She is always willing to facilitate others. Few of us are aware of the role she plays in our current work environment, nor how much work she has done to prepare us for moving forward with our future plans for work scheduling and tracking. Because of these qualities, I believe she should be the employee of the quarter. We're going to move on to the transportation department. I'd like to recognize Bruce Robinson. He's not here today, but he also was recognized as an employee of the quarter. And also in transportation, we have Robert Goulart III. Richard started working for the City of Fresno in November 2007 as a service worker II. Within four months, he was promoted to heavy equipment mechanic II. Richard came to fleet with a vast knowledge and excellent working skills from Penske. He has worked as a lead mechanic and shift supervisor. He has proven himself time and time again as an invaluable asset to our team and fleet. Richard has stepped up many times to fill in during employee absences and does a marvelous job. Richard has a mechanic, Richard started as a mechanic in the construction department and is now the go-to guy in the heavy equipment section. When a difficult or technical task arrives, Richard is usually leading the way. He's always willing to stay late or work overtime to make sure things run smoothly in the area and the department. Thank Richard for all your hard work. It is appreciated. Also in the transportation department is Arnold Napolos. And this is also a dual nomination, and Jim DeSoto was recognized with Arnold. Jim, are you here? Arnold and Jim are a great example of two seasoned committed employees who work well together to achieve results. Arnold and Jim use their 40 years of combined experience to ensure that the FACS bus stops and the shelters are maintained, clean, and in good working condition. Arnold and Jim have also managed several accessibility upgrades, curbs and gutters reinforcement, and lighting improvements. In addition to the responsibility of the day-to-day bus stop maintenance repairs and improvement, Arnold has taken on the management of several FACS capital projects, including ADA upgrades to 20 more stops throughout the city, redesign of downtown stops and shelters, redesign and placement of courched house park transit amenities, and a major CNG station upgrade, and among other improvements to our transit operations and maintenance facilities. These two individuals always give 110% every day, and FACS is proud to have them as part of their team. And finally, we'd like to recognize George Hilton, employee of the quarter.
George?
From the FACS department.
Where's we loving to introduce Butch.
Oh, yeah, it's in here. George Bush Hilton has been a bus driver with the Transportation Department since January 27th, 1990. Mr. Hilton has received awards for safe driving operations, supervisor commendation, director commendation, and has been acknowledged by our customers as a driver who performs his duties in a professional, straightforward, and helpful manner. Butch is committed to providing the service required to our riding public and the community. Mr. Hilton has worked in several levels of service to his fellow coworkers, and when he served on the union board as a platform instructor. Butch has a keen eye when receiving bus fare, accepting monthly passes, special passes, and transfers. He is an employee that works in a capacity with his coworkers and staff to provide an efficient operational system for our customers. Thank you, Butch, for your service. Well, that's all the awards for today, but we do have some delicious food out in the reception area. The clerk staff has done an excellent job, again, providing you, even with quarters for the employees of the quarter. They have little chocolate quarters out there, so that's pretty cool. Yeah, so help yourself, help your family. We're glad you came, and we appreciate you.
Bein' pretty much.
Thank you, Yvonne.
15 minutes, guys.
Fifteen minutes. That's. Yes.
Of all these addendums, supplements, supplemental information packet, et cetera, et cetera, it's my understanding that the agenda on April 26th is the date that this is all due. This is file stamped the 29th. I'm getting it today. We need this information well in advance of the date of the hearing to make effective, intelligent decisions. So I'm really disappointed that and I don't have time to read it, so sorry about that, but we need to follow the rules and stick by the rules, so thank you.
While they're sorting that out, any other council members? Councilman Brand.
I want to recognize the Maple Leaf 3rd grade class. Would you guys stand up?
All right.
Welcome to City Hall and stay as long as you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Councilman Jeong.
Thank you, and just for us, we know that there's a huge event downtown with the Cinco de Mayo weekend, so hopefully to all of our folks and to our residents, come down to downtown and enjoy the festivities. It's a, it's a wonderful event and always the colorfulness and also the food. So to all of our residents, come down to the downtown and enjoy the Cinco de Mayo weekend. Thank you.
Any other council members? I'd like to just add that this last Tuesday, we had a successful joint meeting with the City of Clovis and where we talked about mutual water issues and trail systems for our two, our two cities and our, our community at large. So it was really great to go to Clovis. They hosted a great meeting and we look to return the favor sometime in the fall and bring Clovis to the City of Fresno. Anyway, now we are on to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to today's agenda?
Yeah, there are a couple of changes. Some times have been moved around. The business-friendly workshop has been moved from 1:30 to 11:15. The resolution affirming support for Assembly Bill AB 2686 has been moved from 11:15 to 1:30. And the presentation of the kiosk program by Healthwise Services has been moved from 10:20 to 1:50 for today. 1:50. And there's one other one. Item 1C is in Charlie dash 2. The title should read Northeast Corner, not Northwest Corner.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda? And a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Now we're on to the adoption of today's consent calendar. Any members of the public like to address any of the items on today's consent calendar? Please step up. Oh, I have, let me see, is this card about, oh, it's unscheduled. Anybody that would like to address any item on today's consent calendar, please step up to the microphone and, all right, seeing none? Any members of council have any thoughts about any of those items? All right. Do I have a motion to adopt or to approve our consent calendar? Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Let's see. We're going to tackle a couple of items on general admin then. General Administration, Item A, actions pertaining to the Browning and Palm Water Main Replacements and Transfers. That's Council District 2 and our Public Works Department.
Good morning, Council. Scott Mosier, Public Works Department. This is a project the Public Works has put together and is now ready to award for the Public Utilities Department. You have the staff report. It's a routine water main replacement project and staff's available with any questions, but we'd recommend you proceed and award the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any members of the public like to address this item? All right. Then since that is in Council District 2, I'm just going to make a motion to approve staff recommendation. So I have a motion and a second. Do I have any other council members would like to comment on this? All right, let's vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Leave, what was the name of the school? Maple Creek? Maple? Thank you, students from Maple Creek for joining us today. See you next time. Now we're on to General Admin, Item 1B, actions pertaining to the sale, to the sale of a portion of the Cellon Arena parking lot to Gary Lanfranco, owner of Cosmopolitan Tavern, to operate a restaurant. That's the city manager's office.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. Wilma Quan Chakter, Deputy City Manager. The item before you this morning pertains to the sale of a portion of Cellon Arena parking lot for the relocation of the Cosmopolitan Tavern. As many of you may know, the, this Cosmos is a Fresno institution that has been in business since the 1930s. Staff and city administration has partnered with the owners, Gary and Judy Lanfranco, to find a comparable site within downtown to meet their needs. We have identified a 36,000 square foot portion of the Cellon Arena parking lot at Ventura and Oak Streets as a viable solution. We ask for your support of staff's recommendations as outlined in your staff report. I am here to answer any questions and I'd like to point out that Mr. and Mrs. Lanfranco are in the audience as well. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Wilma. All right. Any members of the public would like to address this item? The sale of this parking lot to the Lanfrancos? Please step forward. Gary, you don't have anything to say yet? Okay. Councilman Quintero.
Yes, I was going to call Gary up, see if he wanted to say a few words. Just get her done? All right.
That is how, all right. Councilman Brand.
Thank you, Council President. And Mr. Lanfranco, I've eaten at your restaurant. It's great food. There are some issues here, though, we need to discuss, and I want to get clarification from the city manager. And the first one is parking. As I understand, this will be the corner of, I guess it was the old project that they had at the ice rink, was that called the Legacy Project? Is this the same corner?
This is the same core, but only half the property.
Okay. So this would take enough for the building of the restaurant plus 60 parking stalls?
That's correct.
And so the first question, would this negatively impact the convention center in terms of big events or like the circus where you're staging for events?
I've met with Mr. Overfelt and for these big, big events like the circus or Disney on Ice, he actually had the promoters come out and look at the facility to see if, from a logistics standpoint, if there were other arrangements that we could make to accommodate their needs. And based on the feedback from those promoters, we, we had offered up a couple of options. For example, with the circus, it's an annual event and as we did during the restoration of the Soroyan and the, and rest of the convention, or part of the convention center, the option that we looked at is actually closing down Inyo for the circus. And that actually will work well because there's an alley that it runs between the parking garage and the Soroyan out to, and to the Cellon Arena. We also will still have the northern end where the covered parking stalls are at, where you can park big rigs and things like that. From a parking standpoint, as we all are aware, we have a very large, underutilized parking garage. It's located on the northern end of the convention center parking, or of the convention center facilities. And from a revenue standpoint, one of the things that we will be addressing in this year's budget is the, the conflict or how we recognize revenues that are being generated at the convention center, specifically parking revenues. Because what has been happening is that when the convention center is, is having events and individuals park their car in the parking garage, the parking fund is the one who receives those revenues, not the convention center. It doesn't get any credit for it. So I've shared with Mr. Overfelt and we have taken steps, and you will see it in this year's budget, to at least provide them a credit. Because as we all know, the parking fund and the convention center are both subsidized by the general fund. So it just depends on the level of subsidy and which division you want to apply. From a capacity standpoint, we feel that the, even for the largest of events, that we will have capacity in and around the convention center as we do now, as well as taking full advantage of the garage that we constructed eight, nine, 10 years ago.
Okay, because, you know, this is an issue that was brought up last year in the Finance and Audit Committee about the convention center, and I agree with the city manager that. The parking revenue is directly attributed to the convention center and they should be given credit for that. So you feel that this won't adversely impact the parking?
I don't believe it will.
At this stage, okay. And the other thing that needs to come out after this, just kind of unrelated but related, is revising our parking policies to do a tiered policy where you actually charge people based on their proximity to the event. This is on an event, so if you want to park a block away, it's like valet parking, you pay more money. And if you want to park two blocks away and pay a couple quarters, you're fine too. But these issues have to be resolved too, I think, and as well as modernizing our entire parking system with getting away from quarters to, you know, electronic ways to do it. The other issue would be the potential conflict with the concessions that are generated from the, the convention center. Now I know going back 30 years when the Bulldogs were playing there and really at capacity crowds, then it was 10,000, that the old Fresno Hoffbrau and restaurants like that were always packed on those game nights. So this is one of those things where it may actually be beneficial to have a restaurant near there because I'm not sure, we're not serving, what, pretzels and hot dogs at the convention center, and I'm assuming your menu goes well beyond that. So what's your take on that?
Your, your point is well taken. Back in the day, the Hoffbrau, as well as a number of other long-established restaurants in Fresno, kind of lived or died based on the level of activity there that occurred in the convention center and the arena. And as we know, the Hoffbrau isn't here any longer, in large part maybe because of the lack of activities that were occurring. I absolutely agree with you that I believe that this project would complement both what goes on in the arena from, from events, conventions, and also will potentially create a new market for Mr. Lanfranco, who will have a new generation of customers who will learn, but we all know is that it's a great place to eat. And that by coming into downtown, which is the goal, they'll come into downtown early, like we used to back in the day at the Hoffbrau, and have dinner, and then walk right over to the convention center and enjoy an evening at, at the Soroyan or at the, at a concert or more importantly, at a convention, because what we hear from the conventionaires and probably will hear it from the CVB, there are not a whole lot of choices of restaurants in downtown after hours. And this provides another opportunity for folks who can easily walk over from the hotel for another choice of, of what is, is, as, as the deputy city manager pointed out, a landmark in our community as far as long-established businesses.
I just think we need to, you know, do it right, think this thing out, not be impulsive like we have in the past. But I do see, I know there's talk of another hockey team coming here too, and I, and my goal when I did this audit last year was to improve, you know, struggling convention center and bring people back, which we're doing already, we're going to be very successful on these co-promotion deals. As more numbers come through there, everybody's going to benefit, including this restaurant that comes in there too, by having this added traffic. And I do believe it can be complementary. I don't think it necessarily is going to do anything to the concessions at the, the arena. Then the final issue would be the sales price. So what is the, the final sales price and how does that tie into market value?
Go ahead, Wilma. I'll let you.
The final sales price was $282,518, and that was based upon an appraisal that was done for the area.
Okay, so.
Counselor, it works out to about $7.75 a square foot, and as we discussed in closed session, that is within the parameters established by council in closed session.
Okay. And because is this, this is RDA property, correct? Is it still City of Fresno property? But the same would apply if, if in fact it's sold below market value, it would trigger prevailing wage, right? Which would escalate the cost of the building, the restaurant. So in your opinion, this is market value and you've got, you can support that with appraisals?
Yes, and more importantly, the city attorney confirms that this will not trigger. It's, it's a fair market value and will not trigger prevailing wage.
Yes, ultimately, it's the developer's risk, but this is within the range that would probably likely be considered a fair market value for those purposes.
Right, that's, that's could add up to 25% to the cost to build the restaurant. And I guess ultimately, Mr. Brandell, this will come from the High Speed Rail, correct? Is that right? This part of the relocation for his restaurant? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Would the High Speed Rail ultimately pay for this cost?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, they're going to transfer the money to him, but ultimately, they're going to pay for it, right?
Right, they, they pay him for his current site plus his relocation costs.
Okay. And what's the timing? If this is approved today, what, what, when would the construction start? When would we see a new restaurant?
Good morning, council members. My name is Ara Kellerisian and I'm assisting the Lanfranco family with this project. And we are intending on working with High Speed Rail immediately following, securing a site for relocation. And it really depends on High Speed Rail's turnaround time of providing funds in order to start the project. We've had a very good start working with the city manager's office on getting the planning for this site done, but it really depends on when the funding comes through. But it, we're, we have a hope to get started, construction as soon as possible, once the project is funded. Obviously, the building plans and whatnot have to be approved and go through the planning department. Construction somewhere around a year is what we've heard from contractors, but that still depends on.
How long will High Speed Rail let you stay in your current location?
That's a negotiating point that we have to work with them because it's very important to get going as quickly as possible because they've said they've wanted to acquire the property as soon as they can. Of course, he has an operating business that, you know, we don't want to see shut down for any period of time. So our hope is to be able to renegotiate with them. So, our hope is to be able to renegotiate with them a timeframe in order to give us enough time to build the new building and not have any downtime. That's our goal.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, that would be just a smooth transition, but I could see if there's delays from either the High Speed Rail or the city in the process in the, you know, the fees and the plans that, you know, if you guys lose six months or a year, now do they compensate you for that if there is a loss of income?
You know, I'm not quite sure what the, I'm sure the city attorney could chime in, but I think there is some provision for loss of business during downtime.
If they had like a six-month downtime, is that covered by High Speed Rail?
There's the potential they can make a claim for that loss of goodwill or income.
Okay, because I wouldn't want us, you guys go broke in the process. So, you've been around here, how many years?
Since thirty-three, the tavern has been open.
Okay, well, hopefully you'll be around another thirty-three years.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, council president. Without judging the quality of this project, I'll be abstaining from voting on it because of the supplement that I received that's sixteen pages long, and we haven't had adequate time to review this, I haven't. And without timely documentation, it's difficult to make these decisions. But it sounds like a great project, but in lieu of this, I have to abstain tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Baines.
Thanks, council president. So, I had some of the similar questions that council member Brand did, and I appreciate your line of questioning, Lee and Bruce. Thank you for really clearing up, clearing up some of those very same questions I had. I think ultimately, we want to be supportive of this, but we wanted to obviously contemplate what some of the, what the consequences would be. There is one question I have, we talked a little bit about parking, what about maneuvering in and out of the loading dock area down there for events like the circus and some, you know, some whatever acts that may come? I know we already have issues with, you know, transportation in and out of there. Is this going to impact that in any way?
We don't believe so, and we'll make sure that we have a circulation plan that can complement both operations. The biggest challenge for the, specifically for the arena, for the loading and unloading of events, is that the back of the arena can only accommodate one tractor-trailer unit at a time, or maybe two. Savmart, I think they can do six or eight, all lined up at the back at the same time. So, it isn't so much the ability to get to the back of house, the biggest problem is the back of house, which is a below-grade, kind of very narrow area. I don't know if any of you have been back behind the arena.
Yeah, I have, yeah.
From a logistics standpoint, that is the biggest, biggest challenge. For example, I think Tool, which was a huge concert, and we'll update you soon via email what we netted from that event, but I think they had six or eight tractor-trailer rigs. And it wasn't finding a location to park those, and we can find places to put those units, those trucks. It's getting them in, getting them unloaded, and when you only can do one truck at a time, rather than eight at a time, that slows down the production schedule, the ability to get the stage set up, sound system set up, and things like that.
Right, okay. And thanks for clarifying what the actual issue was. I wasn't concerned if this could impact that in any way, but glad that you're contemplating that on the front end and not after the fact. I think that was my only, you know, Lee brought up some issues that I think that I wanted to vet out here, and that was really my only other concern, those large, those large events, just making sure that this wouldn't further hamper a seller's ability to attract larger events. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this project as written by staff.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Quintero.
Bruce, just a side question. The, you know, you're saying how much is this going to help the downtown and convention center area, and I agree with you. Some years ago, if you'll recall, the federal government, I believe, made a commitment to try and do everything they could to keep their offices downtown, or if they were going to relocate somewhere, to work with each city and see if they could find a place. Is that still in effect, or, I mean, or was it an unwritten rule or policy or something like that?
Well, it's more like an unwritten commitment.
Okay.
For example, we just found out that the Guaranty Building, which houses a lot of federal, that they're moving out.
Yeah.
And we're not sure where they're moving to, but we don't believe they're moving downtown. But we do have, you know, the courthouse across the street at Ventura, we have PG&E, which is a large campus located right across the street. And then Mr. LaFranco, I don't care where you put a restaurant, some of it comes down to the service and the quality of the product that you provide. And I've joked with Gary, there's times I've tried to get over to get something to eat because they serve a great burger and fries. If anyone hasn't tried the Cosmo, the Cosmo special, but the problem for him is parking. And I think he's got a built-in customer base, but that built-in customer base is used to coming into downtown. And so, we think this project would not only lend itself to making sure that he doesn't lose any of his existing business, but also allows him to expand, which also benefits us and the adjacent developments around the convention center, in addition to complementing what we're doing in the convention center as far as events and conventions.
If I recall, the city, either through RDA or whatever, worked real closely with the owners of Guaranty when that thing came out, putting in those real strong, the dual-pane windows, helping that with the basement down there to turning those into cells or something like, holding cells, and that type of thing. And there was a lot of money that was spent on that building to make it to the specs that the feds needed. And now, it's, they're leaving, so it's kind of sad, and so was an unwritten rule.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. City manager, is this the first project that's directly tied to the High Speed Rail that has come through in terms of relocation and the process that has been discussed many times and how High Speed Rail is looking to help facilitate that move?
This isn't the first project that's come through city hall that we've provided and helped facilitate relocation. We've been very active, for example, with the potential relocation of OK Produce.
Right.
This is the first project in which the relocation involves property owned by the city of Fresno, but it may not be the last, but this is the first one of its kind.
So, if it was, if it wasn't private property, then we, at best, we facilitate the process and it may not come to the city council for approval or whatever it needs, unless it's going through a CUP or conditional use, correct?
That's true.
Okay, and so, but this is one where we own the particular property?
Right.
With that being said, is there...
If I could, just for clarification, the reason that this project ended up where it did is because I think Mr. LaFranco will attest that for months, working with the EDC, working with local real estate brokers, working with a myriad of individuals trying to find a location in downtown that met his needs. And it ultimately turned into, this was about the only place, he looked at other options, he talked to other developers, but nothing was going to meet his needs, and more importantly, nothing could meet his needs in the timeline that he's being given by High Speed Rail.
With that being said, I mean, member Capriolio raises an important issue. Is there a time sensitivity to the decision being made right now?
Well, the time sensitivity, I think, is being driven in large part by High Speed Rail and trying to get some kind of indication that the council would be supportive of the sale. The sale, the final sale would be, I believe, deputy city manager, is contingent upon Mr. LaFranco actually pulling permits for construction of a site, so that we won't close, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going to read it, just so I don't, just so I can get it accurate for the record. So, Espro is expected to close the later of either the date, that is thirty days after the High Speed Rail acquires the buyer's real property located at 1546 Fresno Street, or two, upon thirty days' notice that the buyer has applied for necessary building permits.
So, the timeframe in terms of this is not necessarily the project, the development of the project, it's more of when the agreement or when the city council approves, correct?
Council, Scott Moser Public Works, just want to add from a time sensitivity perspective, the High Speed Rail's contractor, Tudor Perini, Zachary Parsons, has indicated they will be starting in downtown. They do have draft plans in for review, and essentially, High Speed Rail has said they have a construction schedule, this is when they're going to go to work. They hope that businesses can relocate to new sites, however, if there's a hang-up on that side of it, they're still moving forward with construction. And so, I think a time sensitivity would be keeping businesses in operation. That's why we had council that approved the item on business relocation assistance with High Speed Rail funding to try to help our businesses as much as possible, keep them moving. And certainly, we'd want to avoid that scenario wherein they said, okay, we need to take down your building and take your property, and someone's not set up in a new facility yet.
Yeah, I think for sake of discussion, what we're trying to do is alleviate some uncertainty for Mr. LaFranco. In his negotiations, he'd like to get this finalized with High Speed Rail so he can begin to move forward and negotiate a lease while he's still under construction. And we don't believe that over the next two to three weeks, anything's really going to change, and therefore, the reason why the item is before you today.
Well, if there isn't going to be any significant change, then I would say that there shouldn't be any issue with council members to have a little bit more in-depth look at the information, discussion. Like, as member Capriolio has said, this is not an opposition of the project. It's not. It's making sure, and even if I was supportive of the project today, I just want to make it clear to staff and to Tudor Perini, that if it's a city project, and that we're going to have to be approving of it, that I would encourage, and I would really encourage, that the information comes prior to the council meeting, not on the council meeting or the day of. Because if they're already pre-planning, and they're already pre-planning, they have their plans, they have their site plans, they know what particular property that they're looking at, and if it's city property and they're looking to do that, then I would encourage that those information be provided to this council body prior to this, so we won't have this discussion. Then it's just an approval of a good project, that we're all supportive. That's my comment.
Councilman Baines.
So, I certainly want to, on the heels of council member Jong's comments, which are very appropriate, and also member Capriolio's, I want to acknowledge that same sentiment that I do agree with my colleagues in that vein of making sure that we have information in a timely fashion to move forward. I do want to allow for a little more of a perspective too, in the sense of, while those objections are very valid with what we may have with administration, we have a business owner that really is at the whim of everybody else but themselves. So, it's really not the business owner's fault, per se, and really, our movement to delay this project any further would only hurt the business owner. I think, I think the timing issues, while appropriately recorded here for the record, staff should take heed to that, and I think they have. I think, I can see Bruce nodding his head, and I think he gets it. But I think in this particular instance, if we can, we should certainly focus on this extremely dynamic situation that no one in the state's ever done before with High Speed Rail and relocations, and all of the complications that run with that, all the varying dynamics, and a business owner who isn't terribly happy about having to move in the first place, but who's doing the best that they can to stay open and make sure that they keep moving forward. And not having another week or two, or however many weeks we may want of uncertainty for them, is really not in the best interest of the business owner. So, I think with the, I'm hoping we can get enough council support to move this forward on behalf of the business, but at the same time, I think staff should have heard loud and clear that as more of these come forward, which this won't be the last one, this is just the beginning of what's probably going to be a long process, could be, that we certainly have the information in a timely fashion to make these types of decisions should we have to. So, I know it's a little strange, and I completely agree with the sentiment, but I think today, we really should try our best to move this, move this project forward for the business owner, who really is a staple of this community. So, I just wanted to acknowledge my colleagues, but at the same time, hopefully, hopefully offer a little bit more perspective, so we don't put our business owner through any more heartache than necessary.
Thank you, Councilman Baines. Screen is clear, so I'm just going to ask a couple of questions. Bruce, I've heard a couple of concerns, once people saw this item coming up, we'll just say last minute, it kind of came to us last minute. So, a couple of people have rushed out and reached out to me with some concerns. I want to throw them at you and just let me know if they're valid. And one of them ties in with what Councilman Baines said a few minutes ago. Will this, big events like the circus where they bring in multiple trucks, using this property for a restaurant, are we going to quote, "lose the circus" to the convention center?
In my discussions with Mr. Overfelt, he actually met with the promoters, and we do not believe that we're in any jeopardy of losing the circus or Disney on Ice or anything else.
Okay, all right. Then another concern that I heard was, Councilman, this land should be used for a future hotel to support the convention center, and a restaurant is not the best use of land. What are your thoughts there?
We've got property at the corner of Inyo and M Street that we paid a pretty good price for, that was already set aside and vacant for a hotel. So, if and when the hotel wants to be built, we have a vacant site for that.
Yeah, okay. Those were a couple of thoughts that I heard. Now, so, I'm glad to clarify, I wanted to get that on the record, you know, so if, this was such last minute that some people that wanted to express that, now they can go back and see that those were answered. We do, I completely agree with Councilman Capriolio, to get this kind of information, it is a pretty thick packet. I'm kind of familiar with it because of my dealings with High Speed Rail and Mr. LanFranco throughout the course of this project, so I'm kind of familiar with it. However, I imagine it'd be a lot to try and digest a few hours before council meeting. So, this is very funny to me that High Speed Rail is several years behind, they're breaking of ground in the city of Fresno, and their projects completely behind across the state. However, they feel like last minute, they have to impose, that's actually what they're doing, is they're telling Mr. LanFranco that they need his current property in December, so he has to build a restaurant before December. So, he has to put pressure on us, which makes sense. He needs his restaurant to stay operational, so he doesn't lose money, and I appreciate that. And that's actually why I'm going to be supporting the passage today. Yes? Yes, you can, come on, come forward, Gary.
Gary LanFranco, I'm here today, I'm not asking for a handout, and I want you guys to know that the High Speed Rail is not going to make me whole, and this is not something that I want to happen, but I'm being pushed. This has been going on for quite a while, and I'm running out of time. And thanks to the city manager and the mayor, they made this piece, they offered this piece of property, because they've known I've exhausted all my, all my options. And if this doesn't work, then I'm going to fold my tent and go home. I've been, I personally have been downtown for forty-six years. My family's owned this property since nineteen hundred. I have no intentions of starting over going north. If I can't make it work downtown, then like I say, I'm going to fold my tent. So, I'm really not here to get anything for nothing. I don't know if I'm explaining myself well, but that's what it's all about. I just, I just want to get this thing done. This has been going on for quite a while, the High Speed Rail is pushing me. Right now, they're telling me that they want my property by December. Well, that's going to be tough, but, so if this doesn't work, then I got to go.
Right.
So, thank you guys for your consideration.
Thanks, Gary. So, see what I mean? He's got to have another restaurant built by December of this year, and that's why, despite the fact that it's last minute, I'm going to be supporting it today, the sale of this land, and then hopefully, High Speed Rail will in turn get him the money it takes to buy this land. It's a lot involved, but my point is, in the future, I don't, I'm not going to be very helpful jamming things on our city like this. And so, it's not, in my, in my opinion, it's not fair, it's not fair to our business owners like Mr. LanFranco, it's not, it's not fair to us as council members, and so, anyway. But we have a motion and a second, so let's take a vote. All in favor of selling this land to the LanFrancos for their, building of their restaurant? All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Motion passes six, zero, and one. Thank you.
Thank you, council, and we took very close note to your comments today.
Now, we're past due on a couple of items, but the one that I want to get to is, and I want to pronounce her name correctly, so, okay, an appearance by Mary Ann Salgado. And Mary Ann, you have some concerns about expanding public transportation. If you could come and give us your thoughts for three minutes, please.
Good morning, board members. My name is Mary Ann Salgado. I am a 50-year-old woman who is wheelchair-bound. I have been using public transportation ever since I was 17 years old. Many disabled people, including myself, earn a fixed income. Therefore, we can't afford a wheelchair-accessible car. And we depend on public transportation for many reasons, such as jobs, doctors, shopping, schools, grocery stores, especially visiting friends and family. During my use of the public transportation, I have witnessed expansion of Fresno. I have been personally affected by the rise of the economy, the rise of the public transportation such as bus fare. Yet, the city of Fresno continuously declares that there is no funding available to expand the current bus routes in Fresno. I write facts all the time, and we drive by all these new growth developing area around the city, such as northwest area near Hernan and 99. Another example is the northwest area near south of Fresno area. Its services is not transporting west of Polk, but only south of Ashland. And it is not fair that only certain clients get transported to some of these boundaries. I intend to see this situation other way through. I hope, I hope to understand why the city of Fresno will drop us off near some of these places across the street to our desired destination, and some of these places have dangers like no street lights, no stop signs, unknown addresses, railroad tracks. You know, these things could lead to potential lawsuits for the city of Fresno. Board members, I come before you to ask you to plead that the city please review and consider the expansion of the current bus routes. I feel that it's only fair that a rapidly growing city provide access to all its residents. I challenge all the board members to utilize our public systems, try to avail the new opportunities that are being presented to us all. I want to thank in advance for letting me bring this proposal before you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We appreciate your comments. All right, we are on to a 10 o'clock timed item, hearing to consider an appeal filed by Councilmember Brand, appealing the Planning Commission's action regarding vesting tentative tract out at Copper River.
Council President, point of order. Under advice of council, I will be recusing myself from this item.
Okay, all right. Councilman Brand.
This item was denied by the Planning Commission a few weeks ago, and I brought it back on a appeal, because this item is more than just a single item in a tract. This item is directly related to the 2035 general plan, and let me explain. You know, the 2035 general plan that will be seen probably later this year will include high-density mixed-use, smart growth, and there are going to be consequences trying to integrate the general plan with market forces. And the issue here, at least at the, the salient issue at the Planning Commission, was the eight-foot driveways. And there are eight-foot driveways in Copper River, there are eight-foot driveways in private gated communities, and there are eight-foot driveways in areas downtown, eight-foot driveways in areas in the Tower District. So, there's several examples, and this also relates as a direct nexus between this issue and the sidewalk issue that was never really fully resolved back in 2009, when I inherited another appeal on a Gary McDonald subdivision on one or two sidewalks. So, you know, if you have a 10-foot sidewalk, and you've got an eight-foot driveway, you can, one solves the other. And we need to take a look at both of these issues together, and we cannot have a policy that is for, one, for HOAs, or homeowners associations and gated communities, and one's for the city. We have to have a consistent policy. And the importance here, to be successful in implementing the general plan, is to reconcile market-driven forces with our policies. And anytime the density of a subdivision increases more than 7.5 homes per acre, you're going to have issues. These lots in question were 3,500 square feet. Most lots in Fresno and Clovis are typically between 7 to 10, 10,000 feet. So, you're trying to put a, I believe about a 14, 15, 1600-foot home on a lot that's half the size it normally goes on. And so, in this case here, you have, do you want a short driveway, or do you want a five-foot backyard? And we have to find solutions to these deals, because what I learned from a year ago, when we had, or two years ago, when we originally passed the first draft of the general plan, was having goals and concepts are great, but you have to find a way to implement these ideas, and they've got to be market-driven. We all know, the people in the council have been here a while, that there are builders in Madera, Clovis, Herman, Sanger, Selma, that compete directly with us. So, if we don't have a product that sells, they're going to simply drive across the bridge and go into Madera, they're going to go across Willow and the Clovis, and they're going to buy houses there, and they're going to commute to Fresno, which would be counterproductive of what we're trying to do, which is to improve air quality and quality of life. So, I brought this issue, I believe it merits debate, we need to find solutions. There'll be other issues that'll come up over the next year or so, so I'm asking the council to take a look at this. I think we can find solutions. And the final issue that we have to resolve, and about two months ago, with members Brandal and Caprio, we had a press conference with the mayor regarding the state of city streets. To make the, a long story short, we have about a million and a half a year we fund for city street repairs. We have a need of $15 billion. Well, you can see that's going to go over the next 10 years. So, what we don't want to do is have newer tracts that come into existence within city limits that continue to exacerbate that problem. So, what we have to resolve, whether it be by HOA, or by a CFD, a Community Facilities District, is ensure that future street costs, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, storm drains are covered either by an HOA or a CFD. In other words, the people who live there will be paying through their property taxes that may dis, we simply don't have the resources in the general fund to cover those kind of expenses. So, that's why I'm bringing this forward.
And then, yes, Mike? We have a presentation from Darm, is that correct?
Yeah, real quick, while Mike's preparing, the number of the points that Councilmember Brand brought up are spot-on. And understand, this is a policy discussion that we need to have, which will apply not only just to this development, but to all the development. And I will tell you, it's not just an issue for us. In discussions the other night with the city manager of Clovis, they are also grappling with this same issue, and they have some of the same concerns that you will hear from staff today. So, just keep in mind that when we start talking about changes of policy, and not only based on the market, not only does it impact what happens in Fresno, it begins to permeate and affect what happens in other cities as well, because it becomes one of those things in which, well, Clovis does this, or Fresno does this, so why can't you do this? As far as the ability to meet the density, staff will demonstrate that there is product out there that can still meet the requirement of the setback, the driveway. Same square foot house on the same sized lot, but it's a different design, it's a different developer, it's a different product. So, just when we're having this conversation around, and this is a great policy discussion around the general plan, the market forces, et cetera, please keep in mind that we have other builders who seem to be able to figure this out, and those who haven't, have done it, have made a conscious decision to either create a planned urban development, an HOA, or some other process in which to deliver that product to meet the market demands that the council member just talked about. So, Mr. Sanchez, I'll shut up and hand the mic over to you.
Council President Brandal, Members of the Commission, Mike Sanchez, Development Resource Management Staff. The matter before you is an appeal to conditional use permit C-13136 and vesting tentative tract 6045. The project is located in the Copper River Development, just east of Friant Road and north of Elecante Drive, as depicted on the photo. Vesting tentative tract proposes to subdivide 21 acres of the site into 134-lot subdivision at a density of 6.3 units to the acre. The proposed project is consistent with a median low-density planned land use design areas of both the Fresno general plan and the Woodard Park community plan. And indicated this matter is brought to you on appeal. The conditional use permit aspect of this project has two different components, one being the public and the other being the private. The public portion of this project will be 85 lots on public streets, and will include reduced lot sizes, increase in lot coverage, and reduction in yard setbacks. The private element of this particular project will only be 49 lots with a gated portion of development with private streets, also asking for increase in lot coverage and reduction on yard setbacks. The graphic before you basically delineates where the public and private portions of the development are, as denoted by the red line there. The public streets aspect of it is generally a subdivision that ranges between 3,000 and 5,000 square foot lots, whereas the private portion is in the neighborhood of 5,000 to 7,000 square foot lots. Access to the site is directed from north Elecante Avenue, as depicted on the far left. The second point of access would be from Friant Road on an emergency basis only. One of the key issues, as you're well aware, is the setbacks. With respect to public streets, the Fresno Municipal Code does require a 20-foot setback to garage from the back sidewalk. This can be reduced to 18 feet, depending on the type of garage door that is implemented, such as a roll-up door. The public portion of this project has been recommended for 18-foot driveway setback, and that is staff's recommendation, and has been reiterated by the Fresno City Planning Commission. On the private aspect of this project, there are garage setbacks less than 18 feet. However, it must be noted that in a private development, there is a homeowners association that would enforce any types of parking infractions that may occur on these private streets. The following photos that you will see are basically depicting a standard 18 or 20-foot garage setback that have been developed throughout the city. This particular one is located in southeast Fresno, this is the same subdivision. This is one in northwest Fresno, which I believe is the Lennar Track and north of Hernan Avenue, and this is La Ventana over there west of 99. All these graphics do show are depicting at least an 18 or 20-foot standard garage In 2012, the city approved, on a pilot project basis, a project known as Tressana at Copper This was deemed to see if there are any policy changes warranted in our current zoning ordinances or subdivision regulations. This particular project is characterized with public streets with less than 18-foot garage setbacks, and is a non-gated community. Some of the concerns that have been raised in the past regarding reduced setbacks in a public project are parking enforcement, ADA accessibility, safety with limited visibility of sidewalk and street while backing out, increased parking, reducing road access for emergency vehicles, and guest parking limits, and I'll get into that in a second. This picture illustrates the Tressana project at Copper River. As you can see, the garage setbacks are at 8 feet, and you can see the driveway or the sidewalk in the front there. Also note that the driveway is slightly sloped. Here is a car that is parked on this same 8-foot driveway that is clearly impeding travel on the sidewalk, which is an ADA violation, and is also encroaching into the public Here's a similar example in the same development, a common SUV that is also encroaching into the public right-of-way. I would like to stress, in this particular situation, that our parking enforcement section cannot cite this particular vehicle, because our parking controllers cannot enter private property to issue citations. So, this would basically be unenforceable at this particular juncture. There's an interesting slide right here. This is a standard car roughly 16 feet in length. The red vertical line you see down the middle kind of represents where the midpoint would be, so with an 8-foot driveway approach, half the car would still be in the garage, and this would certainly limit the visibility of a driver backing out into the street. And the two stick figures that you see there basically represent, you know, the even grade and the grade of the sidewalk that would be on that particular development. I also like to note that...
Mike, can you speak into the microphone a little bit, a little bit more? Thank you.
I also like to note that in this situation, some studies have been conducted, and nationwide, there are studies that have indicated that, on average, 50 children, 50 children on a weekly basis are basically backed over, run over, from cars either backing out from a garage or from a parking space. And that essentially comes from a website, kidsandcars.org, from that particular website. This photo here represents a 36-foot wide street which is being proposed at the subject by the project developer in this case. What this is intended to show is how parking would be on both sides of the street with an emergency vehicle sighted in between them. While there is room for the vehicle to maneuver through, it does present some potential vehicular And here's an example of while, you know, what this demonstrates here is while the truck can fit there, and the apparatus may be able to be set up, you will still have some, you don't have a clean access to the vehicle, and there may be some, again, some vehicular, some conflicts with emergency service being able to perform their functions in this particular situation. And this is a standard issue that comes up a lot, and whenever an emergency vehicle does enter a development, they're always going to have these types of vehicular conflicts with cars parked on the street, so it would be difficult to maneuver these larger engines. As I indicated, there are some parking enforcement concerns, ADA accessibility concerns, safety with limited visibility and sidewalk, increased parking on the streets, reducing road access, as well as guest parking. And in terms of guest parking, when you have reduced the garage setbacks, you'll likely have more vehicles parked on the street, thus reducing visitor parking, and thus, you would get the, you would also have the potential for additional parking conflicts for emergency Since its inception, staff has always been supportive of the Copper River Ranch development. Today, it is characterized by quality, single-family, custom homes, conventional subdivisions, and planned developments that is in keeping with the overall vision of the Copper River Ranch development, which is one of the underlying premises for to have a blended density over the entire project area. Recently, Copper did experience its first multi-high-density project approval, which was a 13-unit-per-acre project within the Copper River Ranch area. Staff believe that there are alternatives to providing higher densities in single-family neighborhoods without amending the city's standards. This can certainly be done by lot design and product types. The project applicant has clearly demonstrated in the past that higher densities can be achieved on less acreage, and this is clearly evident with the various projects that Granville has done in downtown Fresno and areas outside the inner city. What is simply being suggested here is that the entire toolbox be used when designing the project in order to achieve higher densities. the project in order to achieve higher densities. What you see before you are some other examples of private development that have products that are less than 18 feet and not the eight-foot garage setback. And this is a private development in northwest Fresno. There's the same development here, and another one in northwest Fresno. What you see before you now is track 5891, which was approved a few years ago in west of 99. What this is simply indicating is a reduced lot in the area of 3,000 square feet, and what you see here is you see the building placement of these potential models, and that the garage setbacks are at least 18 feet back from the property line. So what this is simply demonstrating is that there is product type available that can be set back, and that can, you know, accommodate, you know, the garage 18-foot garage setback. This is the same development, another different product, but again, you can see that there's clearly more than adequate garage setback of at least 19 feet in this particular situation. There's another track located in southeast Fresno, east-central Fresno. What this is, this is also a 4,000 to 5,000 square foot lot, and what you see here, I'm sorry, it's a little bit less than that, it's about 3,500 to 4,000 square feet, and you're seeing the same thing here, you're seeing the model types that are here, and you're also seeing the minimum 18-foot garage setback from the public street. What this graphic here is simply demonstrating is the pedestrian accessway for the private component of the development, and what's not shown here that was imposed by the Planning Commission is simply the pedestrian gates that we added toward the southerly portion of this project. Planning Commission, back on April 2nd, did uphold staff's condition in requiring a minimum 18-foot setback from the garage in the back sidewalk on public streets. And again, as I just indicated, they also allow for the sidewalks on one side of the street within the private portion, and also the pedestrian gates, as I just mentioned. Prior to giving the council staff's recommendation, I would like just to reiterate before the record, Madam City Clerk, that the following be entered in, and that is, staff does have concerns with the parking enforcement, as indicated earlier. It is a direct violation of federal for us to prohibit impeding pedestrian access in the right-of-way. As I indicated also before, the city cannot, does not, does not permit parking controllers in a private property to issue citations, and a vehicle certainly cannot have full access if they are on an eight-foot driveway approach. As far as safety is concerned, a vehicle cannot back out adequately and without additional distance, a standard car will cross into the public right-of-way before they have a full, complete view of the sidewalk. As I also indicated, you know, with increased parking on the street, it also reduces, causes vehicle friction for emergency vehicles, as well as guest parking. So those things kind of add up a little bit to create some concerns for staff. Last, the staff will simply recommend that the council approve the environmental document for a finding for reforming for this project, and also deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission recommendation for 18-foot garage setback on the public portion of the project. Staff is available to answer any further questions. Representatives from Public Works, as well as DARM are here to answer any questions the council may have. That would conclude my presentation at this point.
Thank you, Mike. All right, now our public portion. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? Yep, come on up.
Good morning. Mr. President, Members of the Council, my name is Jeff Roberts. I will be one of the speakers that will talk today about this particular issue. I work for Granville Homes, our business address is 1396 West Herndon in the city of Fresno. Today, we're here to appeal to you to consider our request to modify a development standard that was imposed by the Planning Commission on track 6045 several weeks ago. It's within Copper River Ranch, I think you're all familiar with that, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the background of Copper River, but following my brief presentation, Mr. Darius Assimi, the President of Granville, will be talking specifically about the issue of the setback for the driveways, or for the garages. Copper River Ranch, and Mike did a pretty good job of outlining what Copper River Ranch is, it's a master plan community, the largest master plan community in the city of Fresno north of Copper Avenue. It was the first project in the area to ever use tertiary treated water to a reuse system that is used on the golf course and open space areas. It is built around a golf course, there is connectivity in the project for walkers, bikers, and peoples with neighborhood electric vehicles. It was the first in the community to use that. There is an award, next slide. There are a couple components that we want to talk about, that when we worked on this project 10 years ago, we were asked to step out of the box and try some things that were a little different. And we incorporated, as you can see, there's a trailhead that is used by the public, it was partially funded by the Air District with us, and built at the corner of Copper and Friant. There is a vista point, there's a couple shots of that that are out, and connect the project to the Eaton Trail. That project was totally a component that helped enhance the connectivity of our project to regional trails, next. Here's an award-winning park that is actually used by folks that qualify as park inspectors. They look at this particular park, they check it every year, and this is one of the standards that they use that raises the bar for parks in this area. The project, as you can see, is in the very north section of the town, the yellow outlines proposed project 6045. And in the draft general plan, I know you're all familiar with some of those policies, but they encourage a variety of densities, a variety of product types, and they encourage some new things, to, again, step out of the box. You're all familiar with the current general plan, 2025 plan adopted in 2002. It encouraged developers to step out of the envelope and look at in, up, and mixed. That was kind of the mantra, or the buzz phrase, if you will, that was used by staff at that time. We have developed projects in Copper River that we think fit that to a T. We've taken that encouragement very seriously, and we have pushed the envelope in Copper River Ranch. And if we hadn't have done that back 10 or 12 years ago, we wouldn't have things like tertiary treated water, NEV lanes, award-winning parks, and the like. It's our understanding that the new plan, which we're going to be seeing shortly, will be pushing even harder for all developers to step out of the box, go to even higher densities with a different mix of development patterns. And the question is, how are we going to do that? We think we've got part of the answer here today. We realize this is an issue that's fairly new, but these are the types of things that come before this council every now and then. So I want to introduce Darius Assimi, who's going to talk specifically about that issue today. I thank you very much for your time.
Good morning, Council President, Members of the City Council, Darius Assimi, 1396 West Herndon, representing Granville Homes. I'd just like to point a few other slides to your attention, and then I'd like to, with your indulgence, go over Mike Sanchez's presentation. So we need the tools if we ought to have a higher-density module and program available in the city of Fresno. And these, some of these tools are going to be reduced front yard setbacks, and sometimes that means reduced driveways. The project in front of you is part of a three-phase project totaling about almost 200 lots, and we're asking for eight-foot driveway setbacks on approximately 40% of these lots. And that density would, by allowing us to do eight-foot setbacks on driveways, we'd be able to build a product which has been successful in this part of town at about 7.5 dwelling units per acre. Here's some examples of reduced driveway setbacks in the city of Fresno, this is in Tower District. Next, in east-central Fresno, let's do it a little slower. Another picture, in Huntington Boulevard, with reduced driveways. Central Fresno. Northeast Fresno, in older neighborhoods, with reduced setbacks on driveways. Downtown Fresno. This is a recent project approved, actually it's one of our projects, on Fulton and Calaveras, with either six or eight-foot driveways right in the heart of downtown Culture Arts District. And then, this is an example of a project that's currently under construction in northeast Fresno with reduced setbacks. It is a private street development. And of course, the reduced setback driveways at the Tressana project, which was the first project developed, and we have a variety of setbacks, so that the neighborhood will not look monolithic. We have 18-foot driveways were appropriate on a couple of our plans, and eight-foot driveways on other plans. So the neighborhood will actually have a very, an attractive custom feel. Here's a picture of an eight-foot driveway with a homeowner that lives in that home backing out of that driveway, and easily seeing on each side of the driveway and the street for oncoming traffic. So the question is, you know, do we want density, and if we want density, higher density, which we believe we can achieve those goals in northeast Fresno. We, as a development community, we need the tools so that we can develop, deliver a higher-dense product that the market demands. Again, we're, we understand the market conditions, we deal with the marketplace on a regular basis, we know what market demands are, and yes, there are a variety of products that you could use to get to higher density. We believe this is one of those products. Mike showed several examples of neighborhoods with 18-foot setbacks, some of those are 5,000 square foot lots. If you want to go to 5,000 square foot lots, and 6,000 square foot lots, get a density down to five and a half units per acre, yes, we can have 18-foot driveways all day long. Or we have to go to a two-story product. On a two-story product, you can have, you can, you know, change your design and allow for 18-foot setback in the front. Mike brought up another good point about not being able to ticket people that will park on an eight-foot driveway. And yes, occasionally, you're going to get somebody parking their car on an eight-foot driveway. And again, the question is, do we want density? And if you want density, we have to have the tools to deal with density, and the city of Fresno will have to address those issues. By the way, reduced driveways, we believe, is one, is a small issue as you're dealing with density. The bigger issue is going to be when neighbors are going to complain about, you know, my backyard is too small, or my, the second-story windows backing into my backyard are only, you know, eight feet from my property line. Smell, noise, you know, privacy issues are all part of the density. And this body approved the General Plan A, or Modified A, two years ago. So we're on our way to density, and with density, we are going to have some of these challenges. But we, in the private sector, understand these challenges, and we have come up with a product that has been relatively successful in this part of town. So again, issuing tickets to people that are parking, we, when you cross your property line, your car is now on the public right-of-way. So that's not a private property issue. So you can, you can't ticket somebody that is parking, that is encroaching upon the public right-of-way. And then, again, the safety issue that was, that Mike brought up, city of Fresno approves shorter driveways on a regular basis. They just approved, I showed you a picture of one that was approved in northeast Fresno, these are five and seven-foot driveways. Now, it happens to be a public, a private street. So are we saying then that reduced driveways are okay for private streets and gated neighborhoods, and it's safe there, but it's not safe for public streets? I mean, we have to, we have to address those questions. This product has been built in Copper River as a pilot program, it's been very successful, very well received by the public, and we wish to get approval on this project that has been held up for months.
Mr. Assimi, somebody else might call you back up, but you're out of time.
Got it, thank you. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Sure, thank you. Any other members of the public like to address this item for three minutes?
Hi there, my name is Michelle Brun, and I am a real estate broker here in Fresno. I've been practicing real estate for more than 20 years. I've actually sold the homes in the community that's in question, the Tressana community, and I can tell you that it's been a huge success. The homeowners have signed site plans that say they will not park on the driveways. Those not abiding by that, those not abiding by that rule should be ticketed. I think I heard someone say that the city can't go onto private property to ticket, which is ludicrous, because they have no problem with ticketing people who leave their trash cans out on their private property at any given time. So I can't imagine that a parking ticket would be much different. The project located is in one of the most desirable locations in northeast Fresno, and I can tell you, the driveways were not an issue for any of these homeowners. The community sold out in less than six months' time, and I can share with you, I have a very similar community in southeast Fresno, same-sized lots, same-sized situation, and it's taken five years to sell as many homes as we did in this community in six months. There's a waiting list that's forming, actually, for the next phase that you're going to be voting on. The question isn't, would people want to have an 18-foot driveway or an 18-foot backyard? Of course, they want to have both, but it comes down to affordability. And many people, due to age or health reasons, can't purchase a home that's a two-story. As Darius mentioned, you know, to get the density that you need, you have to go to two-story, and there's just people that that will not work for. Let's see, the plans that were showed earlier are almost all two-stores, and like I said, there's just limitations. Market demands have deemed Copper River Ranch land to come at a premium, and due to that fact, the smaller lots are the only way a developer can combine the wants and needs of the buyers with a product that makes sense based upon a financial pro forma. So I encourage the council to support this project, unless, of course, we want to be known as a city that doesn't support business and isn't developer-friendly, and unfortunately, that's the reputation that we have. So I hope that, I hope that you'll support the project. Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right, first up here, Councilman Jean.
City manager, or somebody? In terms of the projects that we're talking here, I just want to make sure I have a better lay of the land. How many projects have we approved in the last couple of years in terms of these type of setbacks?
Well, the only, and I'll let Mike amend anything, I can make it wrong, but the only project that I know on a public street was the pilot program that Mike referenced earlier. Everything else that we have approved have been under PUD or private street development.
Okay. So the copper, Mike, the copper one is the only, is the only one that we've approved in terms of the public, kind of a pilot?
That is correct. The project we showed up that this serves is the only, that's a pilot project, so that's the only one that we've approved.
And so this would be in that same realm? Just stay up here, don't-
Yes, it's in the same area.
Try not to go back, yeah, just go and stay up here. No, 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 just, please. Okay, so this would be in that second realm then, if the council body was to approve it?
Yes, it would, it definitely would be a project that would be, if the council chose to go that direction, it would be a public project that has less than 18-foot garage setbacks, which staff does not support at this point.
When do we approve the pilot project?
That was in 2012.
Is that the, I'm trying to remember, is that the same project where we had the discussion in terms of some liability with public street access and also handicap access, or is that a different project?
I don't recall specifically Councilmember Jean, but I don't believe that particular track map made it to the city council. That just may have ended at the Planning Commission, since there was no appeal to that.
Okay. So it never came to us, Planning Commission approved it, and then the reason why Planning Commission has a different perspective this time is somebody appealed it?
I think the Planning Commission had some concerns with the less than 18-foot setbacks on public streets, such as I reiterated today, so I think they had the same amount of, same type of concern, so I can't speak for them, that's kind of what the general discussion was leading around.
But we, but the Planning Commission approved the pilot project, which is- But we, but the planning commission approved the pilot project, which is similar?
I honestly, Councilmember Jean, I'd have to go back and check, because I, I do know that, I don't believe that project ever came through this body, it just may have ended at the, the planning commission.
Right, so, so if that was the case, then planning commission must have approved it, right?
Yes, if it went to the planning commission, it was approved.
Okay, so, so now we just have, in this particular case, planning commission is not approved, and the council is bringing the item coming back to reconsider, correct?
Not the pilot project, this is a different one.
Right, for this one. Go ahead, Jennifer.
The, the pilot project was actually approved by the prior DARM director as a pilot to see how it would work, so it did not actually go to the planning commission for approval.
All right, so, okay, thanks Jennifer, let me, so let me try to, so it never went to, to the planning commission, it had kind of a, I guess, approved unilaterally to kind of test it out?
There was an attempt to test it, to see if this product type would work, and if there were any, any concerns once it was, once it was approved. Now, the planning commission did approve the track map and the conditions of approval, however, the, the conditions were recommended for approval by the prior DARM director.
Okay, so let's just follow that, that train of thought then, to kind of where we are then. And so it was kind of to test it out, see if it worked, if there was any issues and so forth. So as far as we know now, have there been any particular issues that are raised, or concerns that we were trying to test out, as far as you know?
The, the primary concerns that have been raised are emergency access, the parking is at a premium, so when, when cars, even if both cars of a household are parked in the, in the house, and there are guests, there are parked cars along the street, there's limited frontage, when there are fire hydrants, there's additional limited frontage, there is difficulty for access for fire vehicles, as well as sanitation vehicles. In the middle of the day, it's just fine. Sunday afternoon, in a football game, different story.
So, so based upon our, our test pilot here, these, these are the issues that we, we see with this, with this development?
On, on public right-of-way, correct?
On public right-of-way.
If, if I could, Councilmember.
Please, city manager.
As the planning director pointed out, this was a pilot program, and we've done similar pilot programs for things like wedge curbs, at the request of the development community. But it was very clear at the time, this was a pilot program for us to evaluate the impact. We had concerns then, but we said, we'll test it out. We had assurances that people won't park in, in the driveway, you've seen photos of people parking in the driveway. And in essence, by a shorter setback, you lose two parking stalls. Because if they're not going to park in the driveway, which a lot of people do, they're going to park in the street, and they can't park in the driveway, although we have photos and other examples of where they do that. The challenge that we have in is that, here before us, is that while everyone understood it was a pilot program, with all due respect to the developer, he went forward with another subdivision with these eight-foot driveways in mind, although he clearly knew, they clearly knew, that what we did previously was a pilot program. And now, it's my understanding, there is a second appeal for another development located at Fowler, Fowler and Clinton, same issue. So, we have before us not just this project, but another project, another subdivision, in which the developer designed it around some lots with shorter driveways. It turned out full well that what we did was originally a pilot program.
So I just want to make sure I finish that train of thought. It's a pilot program, it went through planning commission, and then the previous city manager, you made the decision to, to move forward with it, and, and based upon what we're seeing now, these are issues that have risen, and, and, and from the pilot project, that these issues are sufficient to say, good idea, but not the best idea. Okay, I just want to make sure. And so this is public, and so explain what our decision in terms of the private and public, where we would say, it's okay in a private, I'm still trying to get that in my head, in a private development setting, and in a public development setting?
The underlying issue for us, which is why we have, we've told not just this developer, but other developers who have gone ahead and done this, if you want to put in eight-foot driveways, put it in a private, in a planned urban development, put it on a private street, however you want to frame it, primarily because of the indemnification of the liability that the city will be exposed to in the event that something happens. By approving this standard, we are concerned, and I know you've received a letter from the attorney's office raising this concern, that what we are is creating a precedent for other developments to come in with the same standard, and in the event that something happens, we're concerned with the liability associated with, with that policy shift.
So, in a private setting, we're not liable? And maybe I misunderstood the, the letter from the city attorney, and I, and I thought we were strictly liable for whether it's private or public. So, so under the private setting, the city is somehow immune from, from those type of issues?
It's not a matter of immunity, in a private street, the HOA would have responsibility for that, not the city of Fresno. Also, the HOA through CCNRs could regulate the activities on the street and sidewalk and driveways.
So, because of the HOA, then, then the city is, is not considered a partner in a suit, or, or a partner in, in any type of liability issues that may arise from this accidents or unforeseen incidences?
That's correct, it's not city property.
And Bruce, how many, you said that we have another one that's coming up pretty soon in terms of, that's kind of waiting to see what the result of this, are there others that you foresee?
No, the only, as we said, we have other developers who have been able to build on the smaller lot size with an eighteen-foot setback. So the only developer that I know of, go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Councilmember Jean, there is a third project, if you will, that's proposing an eight-foot setback, and that is currently under the very preliminary stages in our DRC process, and that's located at Maple and East.
And this would be in a, in a, in a public type of?
Yes, that's what's being proposed at this juncture.
And just out of curiosity.
Am I for clarification, same developer?
Yes, that's correct.
So we have three projects now, not two.
And, and so just out of curiosity, if, if we say, well, developer, we have these concern issues, we would look for some type of HOA, similar indemnity in a public setting, does that work, does that not work? I probably should let this attorney up here ask, but.
We shared that suggestion, we shared that suggestion with the developer. I think the developer's concern, and I'll let them speak to it, is that they'll have a homeowners association layered on top of a, of a community facilities district. And that, while, which is interesting, because there is a private part of the project that probably going to be followed under an HOA, that's still covered by a CFD, that was their concern. We, we said, listen, you want to go forward with the project, you want to put it under an HOA, have the HOA enforce the parking requirements, and make it a private street, move forward. But that doesn't seem to be a, a solution that they're willing to, to accept.
Mr. Roberts, can I ask you the question? Jeff? Or Mr. Semien, either one? Just the same question I, I threw out there.
Can you repeat the question, please, Councilman?
Yeah, so, to me, it, it has, I love the project, I've been up there at Copper River many a times. Okay, I shouldn't say many a time, when, when I'm allowed to participate in some of the activities out there. So it's, it's definitely, the amenities are wonderful, so to me, it's not the development, the project, or, or, or the development itself, it's the liability issue that I'm looking for, in terms of my responsibility for the city of Fresno.
We believe the liability and the safety issues are the same. The enforcement is different in the homeowners association. There's an association that will carry out the enforcement. On a public neighborhood, the, the city of Fresno will have to carry out the enforcement, but the liability is the same. You, this body, or the planning commission, approves all, all maps. Every map, including the first pilot project, was approved by the planning commission. So, it was not the, the DARM director, it was planning commission approved the first pilot project. And why, why do we do pilot projects, by the way? We do a pilot project to see if it's successful, if, if the market has, has, sees a product as, as desirable, and then we test out some of the issues. Is there a safety issue, is there people backing out of their driveway issues? And we've done those surveys, we've talked to our customers, they love this product. They love this product so much, there's a waiting list for phase two. By the way, October 3rd is when the planning commission approved the first project, and October of this year, last year, this is October of 2012. October of 2013 is when we submitted our application. And today, we are almost, well, it is May 1st, and that's how many months? And if you were, if we would have been told no, you know, in, in November, we would have retooled, gone to a much lower-density product on that development. And I'm, and I want to say this, we're proud to have built a variety of products at Copper River, from three thousand square foot lots, all the way to twenty-five thousand square foot lots. And it was intended to be a mixed-use, mixed-income development. Getting three thousand square foot lots gives us the tools to be able to keep a price point that's affordable, so we can get people into Copper River Ranch at, at, under the exorbitant numbers we expect, expect from Country Club Living. So the private sector needs these tools. Again, the safety issues are the same. You approve gated neighborhoods with five-foot driveways. So, from our perspective, it's not a liability issue, it's an enforcement issue. And the picture that Mike showed with a fire truck, we've designed this neighborhood with thirty-six-foot streets, curb to curb. That is not changing. You can park on both sides, you can get fire trucks, trash trucks going through, so that standard has not been changed. The only difference is a, is a reduced driveway setback. And you, you get those in gated neighborhoods, you have them all throughout the city of Fresno. If this is a liability issue, two years ago, you approved another one on public street, on Fulton and Calaveras in downtown Fresno. And this is just recently, and many others have been approved throughout the city. So, it's going to become an enforcement issue. And again, if you want high density, we in the private sector have to be given the tools, because we understand the market conditions. We have to be given the tools so we can sell products that are, that are higher dense. And by the way, if they're, the first pilot program went through, have any of you received complaints from driveways? Councilmember Brown, that's your dish, have you received a complaint from the homeowners? This subdivision is almost hundred percent complete.
So, Mr. Semien, I just want to make sure, I mean, there's, to, to, at least from what I'm hearing, you're saying that there's a difference between an enforcement issue and a liability issue?
Correct. You're, you're approving five-foot driveways on a regular basis, in gated neighborhoods.
And we're proving that, knowing the liability issues, on a public and on a private development?
Well, if there is an issue with liability, and if somebody has an issue backing out of their driveway, whether it's gated or non-gated, the city will be involved in that complaint. Because planning commission approves those, those projects, again, whether they're gated or non-gated.
No, and, and that's where I think, I'm hearing two different things from, one from our city attorney, and, and obviously from, from the development. Because from my understanding from our city attorney is that, and I'm not asking the question, city attorney, but if I misstated, you can feel free to chime in, in, in that in a private development with, with the minimum setback, or whatever the small setback is, and has HOA, that the city is not liable, because the HOA then has taken the responsibility of it. But in a public setting, if we approved a shorter setback, that there's not an HOA to, to take the liability from us, therefore, the city is, is now the person in liable. So, that's my crux, is, is appreciating the enforcement side of it, enforcement, it's a totally different animal, but the liability, the liability side of, of us, of the city. And, and so I, I think that's, that's what I want to make it clear, and we've done those type of approval in, in the past, and probably, this, this body needs to reconsider some of those discussions.
I guess we, we need some, I don't want to use the word reliability, consistency. City of Fresno approved a project in downtown Fresno two years ago, with six-foot driveways. And they've approved over the last twenty to thirty years, many homes all throughout the city, and we showed the pictures that you saw, and every quarter of the city would reduce driveway setbacks. So, I guess if we're, there is a liability issue, that should have been brought up several years ago, so that the private sector can, can address those in, in a fashion that, that makes sense to this body and to the private community.
So let's just say that I agree totally with that statement. And, and, and in terms of what, at least, I see on the council agenda as an appeal, considered to appeal, and then to what Member Brown initially brought forth as the policy discussion, that we need to have this in, in a public setting. And Member Brown, so let me get a clarification, because it looks like we're making a vote, and usually, we're going to have a policy discussion and get in some depth and provide some clarity. It's usually kind of an intense workshop, that this type of discussion is happening, and then giving a chance for the council to digest, hearing from both our business community, and then from our staff, in terms of, you know, the pros and cons, and where we want, and then the policy body then decides us to provide, which we should always try our best, a consistent level for our business community, in terms of what are the parameters that this body is looking for. But here we are, we're already looking, already to make a, a policy decision change right now, and I'm not sure that I'm, I'm, I'm ready to make that change without having a further in-depth discussion, whether it's public here, and also on the private side, with some several meetings with, with, with not just this, this particular development, but others, to, to make sure that I have a broader breadth of appreciation, because I do agree with the statement that is made, that we do need to have a consistent parameter, so that we're expecting, having the same expectation as what our business community is expecting, so that we don't have these things come in by every time that a policy changes, or at least the dynamics of the development changes.
If I may add to that, Councilmember Jean, so this application went in eight months ago. Knowing that other projects have been approved in the last few years, and knowing that the pilot project was successful, we submit, we submitted this application. From a private perspective, and, and again, you're, you're going to be hearing, I believe, on the Business Friendly Fresno Task Force shortly, from the administration, eight months is a long time to wait to get a project approved. And if we are to have that policy discussion, what our request would be to allow this project to go through, and without further delay, so that we do send a message out to the, to the private sector that we are business-friendly, and that we, eight months is long enough to get your, to get your project approved in the city of Fresno. And then, take a look at that policy decision and have the workshop, and I would urge this, this body to, to address several development code-up issues that are, that are, that are, that are, that continue to delay projects time and again, so that we don't have to go in front of, we don't have to submit the appeals on a regular basis. I would urge this body to address those issues expeditiously over the next sixty days, so we don't have to continue with the appeal process. But in the, in the meanwhile, eight months is long enough, and I, and I request this body to approve this project while we're taking a look at other, other, the entire policy issue.
So, I'll, go ahead.
I'll have a resolution to the issues when you finish.
All right. So, I, I would definitely take the comments into consideration, Mr. Semien. I'll just put this caveat out there, is that sometimes the body hears it when we hear it. And sometimes, and I'm not saying all the time, I say sometimes, the eight months is really two months for us, or a month for us, in terms of when, when we're engaged in the process. And so, issues comes up differently, and I'm not saying that it's not, I think it's going to be important when we have the update on, on the BFF too, because I have small developers that have come and asked in terms of the process as well. And to Member Brown, I look forward to, to your resolution, if, if there is, but just understand, you know, the resolution, if it's going to be done in this manner, as I've said, it probably requires a little bit more in-depth discussion than just a, a one-person solution, if, if we haven't had the parties to, to engage and have the right type of dialogue. So I just want to make sure that I put that out there for, for you, Member Brown. Thank you, I'm done. Thank you, I'm done.
Councilman Baines.
I'm going to take my comments right now.
You know, I just stepped back in.
Yeah, thanks. So I think this is a worthwhile discussion. Thank you, Councilmember Brand, for bringing this forward. I had some similar questions that Councilmember Jong had, and even a few other, few others of my own, but I'm going to keep my comments relatively short. Because this is, I don't necessarily like the, the, the short driveways, I mean, I don't. But I'll tell you that the fact that we've been doing them all over the city for some time, well, we haven't, I saw some.
You know, I, I think it's important that, Jennifer, if you could talk about, I, I don't want the council to believe that we're approving developments with these short driveways all, that they're coming in as an ongoing basis. I also think it's important that we also put on the record why it took eight months to get us this far. So Jennifer, real quickly.
No, not, not right now. I don't, I don't want to have that on the record.
Well, I just, I just don't want to leave council with the impression that we are just being inundated with all this development with these short driveways.
Yeah, let me get through, let me, let me get through my whole thought.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Because we have other areas of the city, as was highlighted in downtown, the tower, southeast, central, none in southwest, by the way. But we have areas across the city that do have eight-foot driveways. So that really, seeing that we are doing those projects already, we've, we've done those projects in the past, those personally aren't my personal preference, but clearly there are folks in, around the city that are, that have already accepted to some point to have some eight-foot driveways. The, the other, the other issue I have is that we are asking the development community to conform to higher-density standards. And, and I think that we're going to have, that we're going to have multiple twists and turns in this discussion along the way. I think it's just going to happen. There are going to be all kinds of challenges that we foresee. I do agree that we need a policy that is, you know, thought out and implemented. But I also think we have to figure out how to balance that with market forces that do exist that are requiring homes to be built and track maps to be, you know, adopted and planned. So I think it's a, I think it's a give and take. And I think we have to figure that out. And I don't think that, that approving this project today is going to not give us the ability to do that. But I do have an issue with taking, you know, some, some of the time that it took and the fact that we have done this before. So, so today, I'm probably going to be supportive of, of Member Brand's appeal, because I think we do have to try to, try to strike a balance. I don't particularly care for the, the eight-foot driveways. I mean, it's not a product I would live in, and I see, I saw your car there, and, and, but however.
I wanted to grab Councilmember Brand's truck, but.
I was just thinking that.
Well, I, I, I tell you that if everyone got Fiat's like I have, then, you know, we wouldn't have that problem. But, but in, in light of that, I think it's, I think it is, I think it is a, a problem. But I don't think today is the day to hold up the project. Listen, I completely agree with Councilmember Jong that we need to, to vet out this issue. But I know how long it takes us to vet out issues. I mean, really, it would be three or four months before we got a chance to, you know, have a workshop, have a policy, come back and discuss it again. I, I know. And then, you know, now, we've delayed this project another year, you know, not another year, but another three or four months. And listen, we've got to be sensitive to these issues with the, working with the private sector. We've, we've given them some pretty tough criteria from their perspective as far as higher-density development. So, and I, and I am in support of higher-density development. But I think that we also have to figure out ways to allow them to respond to that. And it's not going to always be exactly as we think is perfect. So with that, I'm supportive today of Member Brand's appeal, with the caveat that we do need to have a further discussion, further policy discussion that I don't think we should have today. I don't think the policy discussion should be had today. I think it's a good opener. I think that if we can consider this another pilot project per se, that would be fine with me. But the, the larger policy discussion, as Bruce may want to have, and Councilmember Jong and others, I completely concur with, but not today for this project. I think that right now, you know, it's been long enough. And not that I completely agree with our, with the assessment that our community is not developer-friendly. I would challenge that slightly by the, the, the type of growth we've had in this community. It seems like developers have made a lot of money in this, in this community. And I would push back a little bit that, you know, we are not developer-friendly. However, I think that we're always trying to strike a balance. So with that, I'll be supportive today.
Also, Member Brand.
I want to respond to a few things Mr. Sanchez said regarding parking and enforcement. And I know in my district, we've got RVs, we've got boats, I've been working with Dill, that, you know, are consistent problems. And as a city as a whole, it's difficult to have the resources now to even enforce these things. So I think, and you mentioned the safety issue about backing up. I don't care whether you have a 10-foot driveway or a 100-foot driveway, if you're not paying attention, you're going to back up into a kid. Most of the new cars now have cameras behind them now to prevent that. So I don't think the size or length of the driveway has any relationship at all to safety. And if you look in New York, Boston, and Europe, you get the row housing, there's, you know, a lot of cases, not even a garage, but there's, there's no, no front yard at all. Parking could be an issue. When I did the infill act, we talked about, you know, high-density, mixed-use, changing things around European-style developments. Well, I always had, well, we can't bring a fire truck through. We'll get a smaller fire truck. If you're going to do these things, these concepts, you've got to think the whole thing through. And we always go to the easy answer. You know, we've got people trying to make innovative choices here to, to make the general plan successful. Because again, all the ideas and ideals will never work unless there's a market-driven way to make it work. The two-story deal is, is an issue that my younger colleagues don't worry about. When you get older, though, people don't want to go two stories. Because if you start having hip issues and health issues, you're not going to be walking upstairs. So a lot of the people that would be buying, in my opinion, the smaller 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 square foot lots, are going to be either maybe young couples starting out or empty nesters that have got rid of the kids, they're older. And these are people, I guess I'm in that category, who would be concerned about a second story. So that is a legitimate issue there. And this issue embraces the other one we're going to discuss later, which is, you know, business practices in Fresno. It's like red light, green light. I remember two or three years ago, we did Alpha Sale. Here was a previous administration, gave green light, green light, green light. New administration comes in, and then it eventually passed, but there's got to be consistency. This is a project, by the way, that's going to bring a lot of net sales tax dollars into the city of Fresno. And I think that we can solve this problem, at least today. And I might brought it for two reasons. One, for the appeal. And two, which I did, was to discuss the broader policy issue. I'm not expecting that we're going to definitively define or resolve the issue today, but on my motion, city attorney, so I'm making a motion then to, to override the appeal, is that correct? Or I'm overriding the decision of the planning commission, correct?
Right. You would be making a motion to approve sub-items A and B.
Okay, and that's my motion. And I'm going to have a, a, a condition that we are approving this subdivision right now. This is not a blanket approval for every other track out there. And really, in this case here, the horse is out of the barn. We've got one that was done a year, a couple of years ago, already Copper River. We have one downtown. So I, I'm not counting the ones that were done 50 years ago. And even though there's not a legal liability in terms of gated communities, there's a moral. If we're saying it's inherently unsafe to have eight-foot driveways, why do we let, we're saying, that's okay, HOA, kill, kill your people, you'll take care of the liability. That's not right. There's got to be a consistent policy out there. And again, this embraces the sidewalk issue too. That, I don't want a resolution today, we're not going to get that. That needs to be resolved between now and the time we adopt the 2035 general plan. Look at places like Harlan Ranch, and even in, in Copper River, in some cases, the access to the garage is an alleyway, it's not even coming from the street. There's different ways to get connectivity. I understand the financial issue, and the, the easy issue would be, Mr. Semien, could you come forward? On the, the CFD for Copper River basically covers all the maintenance and things I described.
Correct.
So if you implement an HOA within the CFD, is that just redundant charges or the extra charges?
Extra charges.
So it becomes, what are the dues now typically on a lot for, for the CFD fees?
About $100 a, a month, approximately. And the HOA would add another $100 a month, approximately.
Okay, because you're going to add on all the additional liability, insurance, okay?
Correct.
So it's an economic decision?
Correct. And, and a delay decision, a delay. Going through that BRE will delay the project another six to eight months.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion would be, this only approves this subdivision and that we have a broader policy discussion that between now and whenever we, what is the date for the general plan?
May 1st.
Around October.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking at staff. General plan? Late summer, so August? August, September?
Okay. That between now and then, we try to find a resolution on this issue, as well as the sidewalk issue, as well as the overriding, all these types of problems, and others are going to come up, trying to get infill development successful, high density. So there's a myriad of problems out there. But we've got to be smart in how we think. We can't think the traditional linear, this is how Fresno does it. Fresno's got to be smarter. So that's my motion.
Councilmember Brand, I would also recommend, in addition to sub-items A and B, you expressly included in your motion that you are approving the appeal and the short driveways.
Yes.
You have a motion and a second. Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. A couple of questions. I know it seems like we're consistently being inconsistent, but that's probably part of the general plan and its intentions, to take this on a case-by-case, issue-by-issue basis. I had a question on liability. If there is an ADA lawsuit or children are injured, the fire truck thing that was brought up, who, who's responsible for that in a private, not gated, community? And is it different from a public community?
Well, I'll let the attorney weigh in. But my understanding is that a private street, just like a shopping center, is that if something happens in a private development on a private street, the homeowners association or whatever that entity body is would ultimately be responsible. We always get drug in the lawsuits, we all know that. But my understanding is that it is private property, so therefore it is the liability of, of the property owners.
Yeah, what's key is who has control of the property. If it's city property, a city street, then the city has control of it, potentially could have liability. Not so if it's a private street.
Thank you. So we'd be deemed as a party to the lawsuit, but we would be able to seek?
Well, we could be named either way, but we'd be a lot more likely to be out of the suit quickly if it is a private street.
Thank you. And then on the enforcement part of it, there was an agreement between the homeowner and the builder that they would not park in their driveway? And, and has that been consistently adhered to, or? Okay, thank you. And then as part of that, do they sign agreements that they would not, that they would actually park in the garage, or is that too restrictive?
... restrictions for the community that they have to park in the garage and keep their garage clean so they can do so.
And this particular development, how many homes are we talking about?
Well, point, point of clarification, CCNRs apply to a homeowners association. And so who enforces the CCNRs? Who enforces the CCNRs? Really?
Okay, now that we're all confused, who's on first? Ms. Clark, do you have an opinion on that? Would you like to tell us your view?
CCNRs are a private agreement between the person selling the land and the person acquiring the land, and they can only be enforced through private enforcement mechanisms. So I can sue in civil court if I don't have a homeowners association, I can sue someone else within that subdivision. The city cannot enforce a private agreement between private parties.
Very lawyer-like. I, I think with these questions and answers from the entire dius, seems to confirm the work project or workshop that Councilmember Blong is encouraging us to take. And I, I would support that wholeheartedly, just so we can have clarification, we can address these issues, we can get some form of consistency. And perhaps using this project as an example of why it takes eight months, or if, if eight months is quick, I don't know. And try to explain, using that as an example as to how well we're working, and make some conclusions as to business, business friendliness, or maybe not. And also, the code issues that Mr. Semien brought up, to have that incorporated into that workshop, and it might be two workshops, I don't know, but I think these things need to be addressed and brought before us, so we can all understand and comprehend this better, and, and perhaps have fewer questions and more knowledge and information on the subject matter. So I, I think that's a great idea, and we'd like, I'd like to see that happen. I think my other questions have been answered by my colleagues. Thank you very much.
With councils' negligence, I can also suggest that council can approve the project today with the 18-foot setbacks, with the direction of the staff to sit down with the developer and come up with a dump, another product, a floor plan, as we believe is currently available in the marketplace, that would fit on these lots and address this issue. As far as the workshop, absolutely agree that a workshop would be important, and I would actually encourage that the workshop be conducted at your next joint meeting between the city of Clovis and the city of Fresno. Because I indicated to be in the meeting, in discussions with their city manager and assistant city manager, they are, they too are grappling with this same issue. And comments to them about, well, if you don't approve this, then we're going to end up going somewhere else, we've heard that before. So this might be a great opportunity for both of us, because we don't want to be in a situation as we have in the past, where we're approving some new standard or some policy that has an impact on them, and conversely, having them approve a standard or a difference that then ultimately impacts development in our community.
And it seems also, I guess there's two more projects with a similar questions?
Developer has two more projects in the pipeline. One he's already appealing, I guess the other one has just been submitted. So there are two other projects that would be subject to this workshop or, or potentially a shift in policy.
Is there any way to delay the, the appeal process on the other two in order to have the workshop, or is that feasible?
Councilmember Capriolio, this project has taken eight months to get here. Our concern with delaying this project to get to the workshop first is that that could take another eight months. I hope the general plan gets updated this summer, but we've, we've heard summer of 13, now we're summer of 14. So workshops take a long time. Councilmember Baines pointed this out earlier. We hope that it could be done in a couple of months, but typically, to vet every, all the issues out, and with as busy as the city of Fresno is, this, this could take six to eight months longer. And in the meanwhile, this project will, will be, which has a waiting list of people, will, will have to get scrapped. To design a new product, with all due respect to our esteemed city manager, design a new product, find, find out what the market wants, design a new product with eight-foot driveways could take another six to eight months. So I guess the option is, do we, do we, do we broadcast to the world, it takes eight months to get a project approved, potentially approved in the city of Fresno, almost approved, but then we got to wait another six to eight months to redesign the product? What we, what we would like to see is approve this project, so that the delays, so, so we are business friendly. And then sit down over the next five to six months, hopefully sooner, and Councilmember Brand has recommended that, we look at all the development code updates, and take our time going through, going through, going through those projects. So we have this project that we, we would like to get approved. There's a second project with, at, south, actually, it's in your district, in southeast Fresno, or, or east Fresno, that we've requested 18-foot driveways. We want to make sure that, I'm sorry, eight-foot driveways. We want to make sure we do not lose. We wanna make sure we do not lose our place holder on that item. But we would be willing to delay that project a few months with a time limit, with all due respect. Because again, that, every home that we build, we create three jobs and create thirteen thousand dollars in sales tax, out of which about two thousand goes to the City of Fresno, and the property tax revenues that get generated. So we would like to get these done expeditiously. We urge this body to approve this project today, set a workshop, maybe with a deadline of ninety days to come back with recommendations. If it is ninety days or less, we would be willing to delay the second project.
That was my question, projects two and three?
So long as we don't lose the ability to come back and appeal that. But we would like, we would delay that ninety, we would be willing to delay that ninety days. Any challenges with that? One more team?
I can't hear you, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, the plan amendment and rezone associated with tract sixty thirty-three are up on the fifteenth of May. We could have that hearing and then delay the appeal as Darius Asimi suggested for up to ninety days.
Okay, Mr. Sanchez, your view on this potential resolution?
Councilmember Capriolio, with respect to the Clinton Fowler project, that was the plan amendment and rezone are scheduled for council consideration on the fifteenth of May. However, we cannot act upon the CUP until that rezone is approved, which is usually thirty days afterwards. So in essence, we cannot hear the appeal to that on the fifteenth. I would have to wait until some action is taken on the plan amendment and rezone.
Is there any waiver of that appeal process if we delay this? Does the applicant have a?
If the council were, if the council went forward with the plan amendment and rezone as currently planned for Clinton Fowler, essentially there would be at least a thirty-day, well, assuming the council approved it, there'd be a thirty-day wait before we could take action on the CUP if they were to appeal it. So essentially, they probably have, probably some, at least another thirty to sixty days before that would come back on appeal, the CUP.
Thank you very much.
That's already been filed.
I appreciate that, thanks.
Councilman Quintero.
Mike, there was a couple of things you wanted to clarify earlier, I think I saw you get up three or four times.
Yes, yes, should the applicant decide to?
Can you speak louder, please?
I'm sorry, should the applicant decide to provide an alternative product for some of these lots, provided that those, that that project is submitted, you know, according to city standards, we can certainly process that within, you know, sixty to ninety days, it will not take eight months.
Okay, and then the other question, I think I asked the city manager on the item itself, it's listed as A and B, and you clarify, we're recommending approval of the EIR?
We are, staff is recommending approval of the environmental document, which is, okay? Which is, you know, it's consistent and whatnot with all the mitigation, and we're also recommending approval of the planning commission recommendation, which is to keep the eighteen-foot garage setbacks on the private portion of the property. And we are not, staff is not supportive of a reduced garage setback on the public portion of this project.
So you're supportive of A but not B?
Yes.
No, your staff is supportive of both A and B because B is the planning commission's recommendation?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, got it. And then city attorney? Now, do you still have some liability issues?
It's what's been discussed, that there is increased potential city liability for approving it with the eight-foot driveways with, next to a public street.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we have a clear screen. Let's see. Brooke, looked like you wanted to say something, I'm gonna invite you forward and just share what you wanted to say.
Thank you, Council President and fellow members of the city council. I actually came on another issue today for being part of the mayor's Business Friendly Fresno. And I have to, it's beyond me being shorter than six feet tall and Armenian to sit quietly in the back, and I apologize for that. The reality is this, is that some of the comments are a little bit disturbing to me, and not to be taken personally or out of context, but when we say, and myself being a very small developer in this town, where we just, I think I, we were gonna speak on it today, we just paid three hundred thousand this month in building permits for a project that we have going on, so I know a little bit about the process. But I can tell you that my project went through in sixty days. So I can't imagine for Mr. Asimi to be sitting back there and somebody to say, you know, we're here eight months, and eight months feels like two months. Eight months for a developer, especially a small developer, is a lot of freaking money to be able to live by. So I would ask you that when you say eight months is not a big deal, I was at the supervisor debates two weeks ago, and the guy says, "It's only twenty million, it's not that big a number." Twenty million's a big number. Eight months to a developer to wait for a project to be approved is a lot of money. And I would ask you that if you could wait eight months for a paycheck, then more power to you, but most guys can't. That's a big number. I know Mr. Asimi, I'm not really familiar with the project, but I can tell you that I'm out in the community telling people that Fresno is business friendly, and I prove it with myself. We have a seventeen million dollar project that's starting this month in the City of Fresno, which will employ eighty people, eighty people. We're pushing people to Fresno. But golly, I mean, you gotta sit back and resonate with yourself that you're thinking, we're gonna, we're gonna take this thing back for two months or three months or four months. Construction, I own a paving business, construction is just now turning the corner. To put the brakes on, ouch, it really hurts. So I would ask you to consider some of those items, eight months is a long time, whether it's an eight-foot setback, a sixteen-foot setback, high density, low density, whatever, you got a developer that is gonna employ people in the City of Fresno, people need jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. I really don't have any comments to add, but Councilman Jong, you chimed back in, so feel free, and then we'll vote.
Member Brand, just wanna make sure, your motion has a caveat in there that stipulates that we, even if this project moves forward, that everything else is pretty much made clear that's on hiatus until this issue is resolved?
We're only approving this item today, and I don't know if I put in the motion that we have a workshop in X amount of days, but I could add that in there if you want, you know, because again, we're approving this item today, but we're trying to resolve the bigger issue in the next few months. So if you want me to add a deal within ninety days, the administration come back with a workshop to further discuss and hopefully resolve this issue.
So I just wanna make sure that there's a timeframe in there to get this and to make it clarified. And I just wanna make sure there's another clarification, and I'll take the two-month discussion. And just in the process alone, that you understand, just because the issue is eight months, the body sometimes doesn't see it until it's two months or that timeframe. It's not as though this body doesn't, has looked at it for eight months and then doesn't know the process.
And no disrespect, Councilmember Blong.
No, I just wanna make sure it's cleared that?
I understand that, but I have to tell you that Business Friendly Fresno and this mayor is trying to, is trying to speed that up, and I can tell you that when you hear from them, you're gonna see some examples that that is going, that is changing, so no disrespect to you.
As I've said, I'm gonna be excited to hear about that as well, because I have other smaller business developers that, you know, that I've talked to in the last couple of months that says, well, I'm a small developer, smaller than that, and it's taken me a year and a half while Business Friendly Fresno is still going on. So I'm gonna be excited to hear about the positive things, so that I can say, "Hey, small business developer, look at the positive thing that Business Friendly is happening," so that they can go in there and say, "We changed from a year and a half to two years, and now we're gonna follow your path and get it done in whatever the minimal amount of time." So I'm excited to hear what the BFF is gonna say and to show some fruits of the hard labor that has been put together for small business developers within the City of Fresno. But I just wanna make sure that that caveat is there, that the timeframe is there, that we have a resolution pretty clear.
Is that okay with a second?
Yes.
Okay. You got that, city attorney? That we come back with a ninety days with a resolution?
So you're approving, you still have your motion pending, but with that direction to bring back?
Yes, so is that okay with a second?
Later, right.
City attorney, in this vote, what is a yes vote?
A yes vote would be in favor of Councilmember Brand's motion, which is to approve items A and B, but sustain the appeal with respect to the eight-foot driveways. In other words, the eight-foot driveways would be allowed.
And it would include a workshop within ninety days?
That's right.
All right, screen is clear, we've got a motion and a second. We're not voting? What do you mean a resolution? Oh, a resolution within ninety days, I said workshop.
Is a workshop and a resolution to the issue one way or another, up or down?
Oh, all right, all right, cool. All right, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion passes, five and one. All right, it's now twelve oh nine, we're gonna take a lunch break. Leila, when we get back, we're gonna begin with you at one thirty. Thank you. Well, we started the day with four council members, and we're gonna reconvene with four council members. So we are on to, let's see, let me grab this. What was at one time our ten forty item, a workshop relating to the role and function of the Fresno Clovis Convention and Visitors Bureau, and that's council?
Take the unscheduled.
Oh, I'm gonna do unscheduled right after this, yeah. Councilman Brand?
Yes, I wanted to bring Leila here to, because during our hearings last year on the Finance Audit Committee, we, you know, there was a direct connection between the Convention Center and CVB and what they do. And at one time, the city funded those guys about, what, six hundred to seven hundred thousand a year, I think, or more?
One point two million.
One point two million dollars. And once that hard time hit the city about two thousand nine, and we quit making those contributions, slowly, you know, the connection was lost. Even back then, when we were doing those contributions, I remember talking to Stan Oakin, and that we were one of the most lowest-funded cities in the United States as far as supporting our tourism, which is a gateway of three major national parks and all kinds of amenities here. So Leila's here to educate us on what she does and how it connects to the City of Fresno.
I'm council president, Brandell, and council members and staff, city managers' office. Thank you for this opportunity to be here to explain some things about what we do at the Fresno Clovis Convention and Visitors Bureau. My hope is that when we're through here, and I have ten minutes in my understanding, so I've got it down, and then I'll have time if you have any questions and answers, so.
Up a little bit more. Oh, sorry, Leila.
It's okay.
You wanna get that microphone a little bit closer?
Thank you, that's perfect, okay.
Thanks, Todd.
So I need my reading glasses. So if it's all right with you, I'd like to go through the PowerPoint and some notes I have, and then if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Okay, so in today's workshop, we'll be covering the following. The purpose of the workshop, destination marketing organizations, some information about the Fresno Clovis CVB, and the impact of tourism on Fresno County. So today, the purpose of the workshop is to inform the city council about the functions of the Fresno Clovis Convention and Visitors Bureau. In fact, our mission as a destination marketing organization is to promote the Fresno Clovis region to all travel markets. In partnership with the hospitality industry, the bureau generates increased visitor spending, local tax receipts, and job development. Out of eighty-seven hotel properties currently participating, we're in partnership with, seventy-nine of those hotels are in Fresno, and eight are in Clovis. These businesses provide over twelve thousand six hundred jobs and represent almost ten thousand hotel rooms. So our, and our other partners that we work with are comprised of restaurants, attractions, venues, and retail. So there's quite an impact that destination marketing makes on our local economy, as I'm sure you can guess through visitor spending. I'd also like to talk today about expanding the partnership with the Fresno Clovis CVB and the City of Fresno. So as we all know, people don't go to Hawaii to stay at the Ritz Carlton. So one of the things that I've really worked on with our hoteliers as they do fund us is to let them know that we really do have to partner with all of our restaurants and our attractions so that we can market this area and this, actually this county, this region to the world, and not just market eighty-seven hotels. And our hoteliers are on board, I'd like to say, so that's really been a great change there. I'd like to say a little bit about the difference between CVBs and destination marketing organizations. We realized that we needed to step up, because for forty years, the Convention and Visitors Bureau was strictly about conventions. And as many of you may know, the large conventions, many of them have gone away, and there, but there's a lot more out there. There's sporting events, as you know, religious associations, medical, technology, agriculture, leisure tourists, international tour and travel also. So we decided that we needed to expand and become a destination, an accredited destination marketing organization. I decided that honestly, the fifth-largest city in California, being Fresno, deserved a top-notch destination marketing organization. So we went through our accreditation process through Destination Marketing Association International. As you can see on the screen, we have that seal, and that seal to meeting planners is like the good housekeeping seal of approval for all meeting planners. So that, out of one hundred and eighty-one, I'm sorry, we're only, we are one of a hundred and eighty-one accredited DMOs in the world, and one of only eleven in California. It takes months to go through this process. And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce Gay Fontana, who is our Director of Research and Marketing, and my right arm, and she directed us through this project. It was, it was months, months and months of work, and we're very proud that we were approved and accredited. So according to Destination Marketing Association International, a DMO is a not-for-profit organization that represents a specific destination. DMO experts have been helping meeting planners, business travelers, and leisure tourists find the perfect location and fit for more than one hundred years. They are the quintessential source of information about hotels, facilities, attractions, restaurants, and activities, and should always be the first contact for event planning. The DMO's mission is to promote long-term development and marketing of a destination focusing on convention sales, tourism marketing, and services. DMOs can be funded by local funding and/or T-Bid. Most of our competitors are funded by both. Currently, in our case, the Fresno Clovis CVB is funded through a Tourism Business Improvement District. It is currently a one percent assessment fee collected by the hotels and motels in the cities of Fresno and Clovis. The CVB and the City of Fresno have an MOU set up in which the T-Bid monies are collected by the hotels and motels and sent to the city, and then passed on to the CVB less one percent administrative costs for the city. Due to the structure of the T-Bid, our Board of Directors is comprised of twenty-one seats, which fourteen of those seats are represented by hoteliers, so two-thirds, because they do fund us. We also have a representative from the Fresno chapter of the California Restaurant Association, as our restaurants are our large partners. We have two attractions, one representative from the Fresno Convention and Entertainment Center, one Fresno County rep, one City of Clovis rep, and one from the city, I mean, one from the City of Fresno.
Who is the city rep?
Currently, Amy Fuentes is sitting, it used to be Renee, and Amy Fuentes is now sitting in for the City of Fresno. And just to let you know, it was very important when we decided to, when we created this board, those fourteen hoteliers that represent our board are from all the geographic locations in Fresno and Clovis. Clovis only has eight properties, so that wasn't too hard, but in Fresno, we made sure that we had representation from the small mom-and-pop properties, all the way to the, you know, whether it's the Radisson, of course, or the Downtown Holiday Inn. So there's downtown, northeast, southeast, southwest, so I'm very... So, I'm very happy to say that there's great representation, and they have a say in what they're doing. Also Parkway Roading... The Roading Area Corridor is also represented. So, with a staff of seven to 10 people over the last three years, since the inception of the T-Bid, the FCCV has collected $2.6 million over three years, resulting in 365 actual events that we can count through the hotels, or that we've prospected, brought here, and can count the rooms. These events filled 111,093 actualized room nights and delivered an estimated economic impact to the community of $28,558,164. That being said, I'd like to explain the calculation of our economic impact, since that has been in question. These calculations are based on DMAI recommendations for the Fresno area. And actually, we are actually very conservative on these numbers. The total actual... So, in our database, we have a formula that takes the total actual room nights after the event has happened, verified by our hoteliers, times the actual average room rate, the number of out-of-town attendees, times $70, plus local attendees, times $35, plus the 12% TOT, 10% in Clovis, plus the 1% T-Bid fee. When available to us, we do add food and beverage and space rental and that sort of thing for the economic impact if it's at the Convention Center facilities. We really haven't had that available to us, but I'm hoping that now that I'm on that advisory board that we'll get more of that information. And the main reason we do this is because we want everyone to realize, everyone that is from our cities, and also for our meeting planners, how valuable these groups are to us and how many tourism dollars come in here, come here. Clean dollars, we don't provide services for them. So, that is the main reason. We don't get a commission or, you know, anything else, you know, anything like that for whatever these groups bring in. We just want to make sure that we're providing these reports for the clients, and they do appreciate that. And also, we just want everyone here to know that these are really valuable groups, and we want to take good care of them and have them come back to our city. 84% of our T-Bid is spent on marketing and sales. As you can see, I've listed some of the employee salary and benefits, collaterals, advertising, trade shows, fam tours, client servicing, bid fees, sponsorships. And bid fees and sponsorships are the same, just some of them call it a sponsorship and some call it a bid fee, some of the clients. Contingencies, database, housing fees, website, membership, and research. So, that doesn't leave a whole lot for operations and the rest of the salaries and benefits. But because we are a marketing destination, that is what we need to do, is spend the majority of our budget on marketing and sales. More specifically, on marketing, we have research-based marketing, and we purchase research through American Express, the Office of Travel and Tourism, Smith Travel, and Visa View. We also look to Dean Runyon Reports also for some of our numbers. We provide an annual marketing plan that is approved by our board with core marketing strategies. We produce a visitor's guide that we do every two years. We provide all the content and the design, and we have 50,000 of those published, and we also can print them online. And I do have a copy of the visitor guide here for you, if you'd like one. Social media, we have a destination builders program where we work with Fresno State University interns, and they help us with Facebook, Twitter, website, and so forth. We actually are in the process of hiring an outside marketing company, which I'm really excited about, and that will be a local company. Print advertising, bid fees, broadcast, collaterals, digital, online, those are all part of our advertising budget. We attend about 12 trade shows a year, and those vary from teams, which is the sports trade show, to tour and travel, Powwow International, to California youth soccer, to government meeting planners, and Association of... California Society of Association Executives. Our website redesign is almost complete. We are changing it so it will match our visitor's guide and also so that it will be responsive for mobile apps. Outdoor advertising, we have advertising at Fresno-Yosemite International and billboards. And we had billboards. And then we have many memberships that we have to be part of. For example, US Travel, we have to be a part of that in order to attend some of these trade shows. So, I'd like to go on to sales functions. In the past, the Fresno-Clovis Convention and Visitors Bureau has been referred to as a housing service, so I'd like to explain what our sales department does. The primary function of the sales team is to book room night generating business. And as you can see with this chart, we begin with our inventory. We have to know all the venue spaces that are available for us to book. And then we prospect, just like you would if you... Whatever you might sell. People don't call us up and say, "I want to have my convention in Fresno." We have to go find people that will come here, that will fit in our venues. So, we go through a whole... The prospecting, the site tour, fam tour, definite contracts, putting them together with our Convention Center facilities and our hoteliers. And then we also provide a housing service, and we pay per reservation on our housing service. We take that cost on. We also provide client services. And then, of course, we always hope to rebook the event while they're still here. So, on my last page, I'd just like to have a few recommendations for expanding our partnership. Perhaps quarterly council workshops is too much, but maybe twice a year. I'd like to be able to come back and then go in-depth on different things that we're doing so that it's, you know, this is just kind of an overall brief. And I just want to make sure that you know we're here promoting this destination, all of your districts, you know, every, everything that we have available. And then, perhaps down the road, I understand that our budget is our budget, but it would be nice to be able to get some more bid monies to bid on other events, especially sporting events, and also perhaps even some money that's just marked for marketing the Fresno Convention and Entertainment facilities. And we do market those facilities along with our other venues. And we currently have four commercials that we have produced, and we have out. So, we're looking to go into the LA area next. So, I think that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Leila. So, this was a workshop, so the public-
Yeah, it's just-
Just a workshop? So, if there's any council questions or comments, Lee?
Yeah, I just want to have a few questions, Leila. How are the current trends going now in your business? Has the last couple of years picked up? Do you have any numbers on that?
It's actually going... It's actually picking up. The last two years, this year, this last year in particular... I've been in the hotel industry here. I was a hotelier here for 18 years, so I know the percentages of occupancy and ADR pretty well. And for the first time, last year, in probably 20 years, we crossed over the 60% occupancy. I think you remember that, Renee, you were on the board. And overall occupancy, which for Fresno, I mean, it's been down in the 50s for quite some time. So, and when I, as I speak with the hoteliers, they're being very positive. Things are looking up, it's getting better.
There was a proliferation of hotels in Clovis, a lot of them the last four or five years. Do you think they've... The markets absorb the, all the rooms?
The hotels in Clovis, because there's only eight, and they're all small products, you know, they're not full-service properties, they run probably about an 87% occupancy. They're-
Isn't about 50% the break-even point in the industry?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you really want to ideally be at 70%.
70%?
You're really making money. The average rate's gone up, though, significantly, so that's-
And our rate is 12% for the TOT tax, and Clovis is 10%?
Yes.
How's that compare on a statewide basis?
We're right in there. Sacramento, most of our competitors are with their T-Bid and their occupancy tax, they're like at 12%, 13% TOT, and then plus 1% or 2% T-Bid. So, they're 14 and 15% is the average. I just got some information from-
And I think our budget, the city manages around $9 million for TOT tax. Is that expected to move up much?
Not significantly, no.
Okay, all right. And it's been fairly consistent that-
Good news, it's not going down either.
I remember looking at all the stuff in the-
It's coming back, because it did-
The spreadsheets I saw last year in the Audit Committee on the TOT taxes have been fairly consistent, within a million dollars. You said last year, you guys generated 365 events?
The last three years.
Three, okay. How many of those were downtown at the Convention Center?
I don't know off the top of my head how many, but a lot of them. Yeah, I mean, well, the big ones, all the big ones, of course. You know, your FFAs and your Order of Eastern Star, and the religious... Most of the religious groups are down here. The number-one market for us right now, really, the last few years, is sports. I mean, sports is the number-one market. And so, those are all over the place, and not generally downtown.
Talking about like a state cross-country meet, the state track and field championships in Clovis?
Softball, soccer, I mean-
Okay, those are the big money-
All of those. We even added another salesperson for sports because we know, we have the venues, we have the weather, and people even through the recession did not stop spending money on their children playing sports. I mean, that was the one. And the whole family comes, you know, they might... And so, we've really worked on putting together pre- and post-itineries so they can come early, stay longer, that's been-
You mentioned, as far as, you know, there was a budget item. It's called bid money?
Yes.
What would you need to be successful to bring in?
Well, we used to have through the Sports Council available $200,000, and I don't know that we ever used that much. I think maybe $100,000 for a year.
Yeah, probably close to $100,000, but yeah, some of those agreements with the Sports Council are still in place. So, in some ways, the city... Cross-country track meet that we talked about is-
And that's where we need help. If we could just at least continue to do those. I know it's $17,100 for cross-country currently. Isn't it 17,1?
Well, we actually pay them.
Right.
Right. And then we have... Yeah, we pay them.
Yeah, no, that's the bid fees that are promised out there through...
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
How much would you need, Leila, then, to be more competitive?
I would say at least $100,000 a year. I mean, we, out of our budget, we spent $118,000 over three years. You know, and we just... There's a lot... Bakersfield is really throwing money at, you know-
Do you measure the dollars spent versus the dollars returned?
Yes.
What's the ratio?
I don't know off the top of my head, you know, with all the sports, but I can get that.
And the final thing is on the Convention Center. In the last two or three years, I know since the city quit funding you guys, so what is your connection, you know, to SMG and how you guys work together to do the downtown events at Selon Arena or Seroyan?
You know, as we go out and we prospect people, clients, and we find clients that will fit in these facilities downtown, then we set up an appointment with the Convention Center, you know, employees. It would be the sales team. And we do a site tour. We bring them, we pay to bring the client here. We either fly them here, or we pay for their meals, their hotel there. And we set up an appointment with the SMG people, and we do a site tour. If they're not available, we make an arrangement where we can do the site tour maintenance, opens the door for us, or whatever. And so, then we sit down, and, you know, they work out their contract. But we get as much information as we can ahead of time so that they're prepared with their contract. We try to just, you know, have it all ready for them when they're here. So, that's how we work with them to book the-
They have their own marketing people too, right?
They do.
So, what do you do different than they do as far as trying to bring in people to the downtown Convention Center?
Well, we focus... Our sales department focuses on room night generating events. I mean, where theirs is more concerts and those kinds of things, more local-type events. Not that they don't want to sell... Yeah, I'm sure that, you know, if there's room nights attached, that's great. But we do the conventions and meetings and that sort of thing. And I think, I think right now, they have, what, two people? Two salespeople?
In your opinion, is there anything you could do differently that would make it work better? Was there anything you could do to make it work better between SMG and you guys?
Um, yeah. Yeah, I have to be honest. No, it is... The challenge is, is, you know, for example, the last two large events we had, they, the two clients, two totally separate groups, had the same complaint. And the complaint was, they went to the general manager to talk about the things being amassed during their event, and they were told, "The City of Fresno does not give us enough money to clean this up during... We don't have the people." Well, and so, they're like, "Well, then you clean it up." You know, I mean, that's... They don't... And they paid a cleaning fee. And that's... We get... Those are the kind of comments we get. Or, and so, you know, when you spend two years trying to get an event here, and then that happens, it's not good. And that's the truth. I mean, I hate to say it, but it's been a challenge. I don't, I don't know how that gets fixed. Because nobody cares about... I mean, it's like garing out your dirty laundry, right? I mean, you don't, you don't say that to a client, and... Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, we have a lot of work to do, right?
We do. But you know, I mean, we are... We work with everybody and anybody that wants to bring them. We have lots of partners, and we need lots of partners to bring people here because this is a great destination. And we truly do love this destination, and we believe in it. And so, you know, we'll keep doing what we can do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Leila.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Ah, Council President's here. So, we're at the 1:30 PM resolution. Council President, the 1:30 PM resolution. All right, we are on to the resolution. It's coming from my office in support of Assembly Bill 2686. That's the PRAEA, what's known as the PRAEA Water Bond. And it's a Clean, Safe, and Reliable Water Supply Act of 2014, and the Importance of Above-Ground Water Storage, Delta Restoration, and Safe Drinking Water. And I want to give a little background, and then I'm going to invite Erica from Assemblyman PRAEA's office, and she's going to come up and talk to us a little bit about this bond. And then I will... Then it'll come back to me. I'll read the resolution itself, and we can vote on it. can vote on it, we'll take comments from the public also. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about this bond and, and why I'm supporting it. Earlier this year, we voted on a, in support of a resolution for a bond as well, and we took a, several of us, Councilman Baines, Councilman Olivier, and I took a tour of Temperance Flat with Mario Santoyo, who's in the audience with us today, and talked about water storage that would really help, be helpful to our community. Everyone knows that we're in the middle of a drought right now, and that's a temporary problem, hopefully, keeping our fingers crossed, but there's an ongoing, long, long-term problem that we have, is that our population is ever-growing in the state, but also in our valley, and when you have growing population and you don't add infrastructure, before long you get to a crisis point on your limitations. So we're getting, we're in that crisis point. So, we've got a growing population, we have not expanded infrastructure in an awful long time, and this particular bond secures water storage infrastructure for the Central Valley, which is really cool. And that's one of the reasons why there's a competition of bonds out there, but in my opinion, this bond is the best fit for the Central Valley, and it's being led by a Central Valley elected representative. And so, I'm really supportive of this bond, and so I've, Councilman Olivier and Baines and I had also taken that tour, which was fantastic, by the way, a lot of information, and talked about hypothetically, if Temperance Flat Dam gets built, the benefits to not just the city of Fresno, but the whole region of the Central Valley. So, for those reasons, I'm supportive, and I, I will read the, the bond itself, or my resolution itself in just a few minutes, but I'd like to invite Erica from Assemblyman Perea's office to talk a little bit about the bond, and then we will, then go out to the public for comment, come back up to council for, for questions as well. So Erica.
Thank you. Thank you, council president and members, thank you for allowing me to present Assembly Bill twenty six eighty six. This bipartisan legislation will reduce the dollar amount of the current eleven point one billion dollar, uh, water bond that's slated to be on the November ballot, and update the bond to reflect current demands. This bill would fund investments for water supply reliability, groundwater quality, delta sustainability, water recycling, conservation, and storage. Specifically, AB twenty six eighty six provides one billion for clean, safe, and drinking water, one point five billion for protection of rivers, lakes, streams, coastal waters, and watershed, one point five billion for regional water management for climate change, two point two five billion for the delta restoration and stability, three billion for continued appropriation for water storage and climate change, as well as monies for water recycling and groundwater. As you know, the state is facing one of the worst droughts in history, similar to two thousand nine, water supply is affecting employment, health, and safety, and the quality of life for millions of residents. In the Central Valley, farms do not have the water necessary to grow food, fields are growing idle, and unemployment and food costs are rising. Groundwater aquifers are going dry, and residents in some areas have run out of water. This year, the legislature provided immediate relief to areas the hardest hit by the drought, through emergency drought legislation, but these efforts are not long-term solutions, and we must plan for the future. With the state's growing demands for water and the impacts for climate change over the next century, California needs to reinvest in water infrastructure. AB twenty six eighty six would provide the necessary resources to secure quality of life for future generations to come, and as you had mentioned, the, I, the issues that were identified by the council for the August twenty ninth resolution are included in this measure. So with that, I respectfully ask for your eye, though.
Now, any members of the public would like to address that, feel free to come up to the microphone, you'll have three minutes. Right on, Mario.
Good afternoon, I'm Mario Santoyo, I'm, I both represent the Front Water Authority, provides water to the city of Fresno and most of the counties, starting from Madera all the way to Kern, but I'm also part of the Latino Water Coalition, and so, through both hats, basically, been advocating, trying to get some permanent infrastructure that will provide greater reliability for the city of Fresno, the Central Valley, and, and the state of California. I would encourage you to, to, to vote yes on the resolution, on the basis that, that it is the only existing bond in the building right now that has everything that meets the needs of the valley. There are a number of other bills out there, they're not all at the level that provides surety for what we need. So Henry's does provide that, so I, again, I would encourage you to vote yes on it. I, I've been working on this for a long, long time, so I can give you the assurances of being in the nuts and bolts on this, that this is, this is the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment? All right then, back up with the dais. If anybody has any questions or comments for Erica, that would be cool. Councilman Jeong.
Good question, it's for Mario, actually. So how many bonds do we have that's floating up there at the state right now?
Well, we have, in the assembly side, we have about, we have three, that's actually, actually four. There's four bonds on the assembly side, two by Assemblymember Rendon, one by Assemblymember Bigelow and Conway, and one by Henry. On the senate side, we have basically two, two, one by Lois Walk, and one by Senator Ben Wessa, who introduced his this past Monday.
And when do, when are we hoping that they take all those to, to try to come up with one before the election time?
See, that, that's an excellent question. That's the challenge that we're having right now, is that, as you all know, the, there is a bond that's on the tracks heading to November of this year, that's the original eleven point one four bond. We've, we've come to the, this council before to support that, I think you, you maintain that, because that one does provide everything we need. However, given the nature of the attacks that were made on it and the need to modify it, we're hoping to have a modified bond, but it's got to get resolved by June, because then we go into phase two, which is trying to make it pass in November. So, uh, there's not a whole lot of time here, and so the focus needs to narrow down to one that has the right things, and I think that's what, that's the message you send when you, when you say the Perea build is the right one.
So, so the, the state legislature has till June to, um?
June twenty sixth.
That, that doesn't bring me a lot of confidence in terms of our state legislature to get something done that quickly.
Uh, that's why I'm saying, Plan B has, that you, you hold with the original one if we're not successful in getting a modified one. Go on.
Wow. Bruce, just quickly, have, have, have our water department, or have we taken a look at, at, at the different ones and, and just our particular position on, I know I've heard a lot of good stuff about the Perea bond, but have we, with Martin, taken a position and said, "This is the best one for us"?
Well, we haven't taken a position one way, because as you point out, there's a number of them flowing around, and on any given day, they could be, they could be changed. We are generally supportive of, of anything that's used and invested, you know, infrastructure for storage. As, as Erica knows, when she made the presentation to the council of governments, and I don't know if you're going to be prepared to respond to this, but the city's making a significant investment in a surface water treatment facility, which in all practical purposes, allows us to reduce the amount of groundwater pumping that we're doing, which is also a significant issue, and at the same time, allows us to, through recharge, investments in recharge, build our aquifer back up, and underneath the city of Fresno, the city of Clovis, is a very large aquifer, unfortunately, for like forty or fifty, eighty years, we've been overdrafting that. So the question I posed to Erica is that, under the bill, would the infrastructure that is used for storage, whether it is surface storage or underground storage, would that be an eligible project? And I could tell you, based on the reaction from a lot of cities, especially the small cities who are struggling with water issues, being able to invest in their water systems in order to provide storage, rather than being reliant upon if and when we build a canal, or, and a canal, additional surface storage in, in the Sierras, actually resonated with a lot of them, because as we know, a lot of these small cities are struggling with their existing systems in order to provide water. Orange Cove is a good example, who's solely reliant on what comes out of, out of Fryand Kern Canal.
Let me, let me try to address that, because I've had these conversations with a number of organizations in Sacramento. The, the water bond, the way it's structured in Chapter Eight, Storage, does include for both above-ground and below-ground. Additional project opportunities exist in the regional project section of the water bond for more regional, smaller projects. But I want to make real clear here, the same thing I, I did with the, the Delta Council, is that you cannot have successful groundwater storage, you just cannot have it if you don't have a big reservoir to hold the runoff and then disperse it in time to let it percolate. It, 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 it works that way. So, all I can tell you here, and it should be of interest to the city of Fresno, is that the reason that you are, enjoy a groundwater condition for your residents is because a lot of groundwater recharging has occurred over the years. We don't have that anymore. The San Joaquin River Settlement has taken a lot of that away. The only way to get it back is to be able to use all that water that we released due to flood control out to the ocean to recharge here in the area. That's why above-ground storage is important. It's going to take a long time to build that, we should be doing groundwater projects in the interim, but we cannot let go of building the big one, otherwise, we, we will be in the same position we're in today.
This should be my last, I think. Erica, sorry. In terms of our surrounding cities, what other cities have put up similar resolutions that you're asking of the city council?
The city of Selma, city of Fowler, city of Orange Cove, city of Fireball, city of, let me see, Selma, Fowler, Orange Cove, Reedley, and I will be in Kalinka tonight, and I'm scheduled in the next two weeks out to go to the meeting.
Thought I, I thought I heard this discussion on COG too, has COG taken a position?
Yeah, COG did take a position on it as well, as well as Fryand and Westland's Water District.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. No, it's really good job of getting a, a broad base of support. Those are it, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, if the screen is clear, Councilman Brand.
Just want to follow up on what you said earlier this week at the joint meeting with Clovis, that the problem, the eighty percent of the, of the surface water is lost going out to the ocean or through evaporation, and it's, of course, very expensive to build Temperance Flat, but as we propose a, a large eighty million, eighty million gallon a day surface water treatment plant that does have the capability to store water, predict on good years, that in fact will enable us over so many years to actually, you know, bring the water table back to what it was back in nineteen thirty, and we have this vast underground aquifer in Fresno, it's a natural phenomenon, that probably not in any other place in California, that getting the state to allocate some of that bond money for the city of Fresno to actually build up with more surface water treatment would probably be a lot less expensive than, than, not that we don't need the Temperance Flat, but as an alternative or as a adjunct to that, could you comment on that?
I'm going to give you a prime example, because I, for the longest time in my career, I operated the system, and in, if you all recall, basically, the, the last time we had the big floods, in, in both years, we, we released over a million, million and a half acre feet into the ocean. So what, what happens is, when you have all this major runoff coming into the reservoir, that reservoir fills up real quick, and so then you have a choice, can you move it out to the counties and deposit it in, or do you dump it into the river and send it to the ocean? As an example, in nineteen ninety seven, that was the big, big wet year, I had a hundred and twenty thousand cubic feet per second coming into the reservoir. I only have two arteries, one the Madera Canal, which is a thousand CFS, and the Fryand Kern, which is five thousand CFS. So, the total capacity I had was six thousand CFS to divert a hundred and twenty thousand CFS. So, so even if I was at full capacity, I would only be able to move a little bit of that amount. But here's the problem, and this is what I told people in Sacramento, is during that same time, when I get told, "Move water, otherwise we dump it," I get on the horn, and I talk to everybody throughout the counties, and I say, "Can I move water to your area?" Their answer to me is, "No." Because logically, what's happening is, if we're getting drenched in one area, people are getting drenched in their areas. So, during the time that we had that situation, instead of being able to move five thousand CFS down the Fryand Kern Canal, I could only move two thousand, because nobody wanted it. So in order to fill the aquifer that we're talking about here in Fresno, you got to hold it back for a future date, when then you can kind of slowly move it down the canal, in your, in your basin, let it percolate, and you do that on, that's, that's the way you fill underground, because you have to have a source of water to fill your underground, and that, and that's what you do with all this wet water. Over the past thirty years, we have sent over fourteen million acre feet to the ocean due to flood releases. That represents thirty years' worth of water for the city of Fresno. That's all I'm saying, is if you don't have the big cup, you can't fill the underground.
So, the infrastructure would not only be the dam, you're talking about the delivery system, the canals, and increasing the capacity to handle, was it ninety, ninety-seven, the year, it was a hundred-year flood?
Yes.
And then knocked the bridge down?
Yes.
Right, okay.
That is correct.
So that's part of the deal too, right? It's part of the bond then?
Well, what's important is this, it's, it's not just, it's not just about building above-ground, but you have to build, build infrastructure for below-ground. So at the time that we are going to build above-ground, you're need to be investing in your recharge basin so that you have a place to be able to sink it. So it's a combination of doing those things to optimize your groundwater condition.
Right, but what we do here in Fresno would have a direct impact on the entire county, correct?
Absolutely. And what the farmers do around you has an impact on you, right? Because what's going to happen this year, unfortunately, is that no, there's no surface water, no, no federal surface water. So that means that tens of thousands of straws, all the farmers, are going to go to the ground, and they're going to start sucking it up, right? And so as they suck it up, your boundary area is not exempt, right? So your groundwater is going to drop. So the only way to solve that is to bring the surface water to the farmers in lieu of them pulling from the ground. And having an above-ground project is what does that.
Okay, so the aquifer really spreads miles, right? It spreads up the west side of the valley, north, south, so we're all affected, we all are.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce, you look like you wanted to say something.
No, I, I agree completely, and it's ironic that we're talking about this at the same time we're being sued. So, you know, the purposes of, of our rate plan was to put the infrastructure in place in order for us to make those reinvestments after forty, eighty years of overdraft, so that when we do have a drought year, it's the same logic. We're trying to create the storage and recharge our aquifer, so when it does call, say, "Hey, I've got five thousand, can you take it?", we don't go, "No," we go, "Oh yeah, we got it, and we've got a place to park it," either through recharge or direct injection back into the aquifer. But the problem is, even during a normal, not a hundred-year flood, even during a normal year, we don't have enough storage in our existing system to, that when there are releases, whether it's from one reservoir or two reservoirs, if those, if that water is flowing down the Fryand Kern Canal, or from, from the King's Basin, we don't have any place to park it, which is what we are trying to invest in, is our future and, and the, and one of the largest aquifers in the area.
And Bruce, on, basically, basically, all of our infrastructure, people get highlighted that we're building a surface water treatment plant, which allows us to use surface water and not have to rely upon our aquifer, but also, part of that money of, that fee increase covers more recharge facilities, right?
The ability to percolate back into.
We're trying to do our part, Mario, locally as well, but a couple of the council members showed concern about water storage, and you and I have got to have many conversations, and I've called you, and I, I've said, "Mario, I have to have a guarantee on this." So, would you tell us about, you or Erica, doesn't matter to me, about this ongoing appropriations for the water storage in this bond, and why this bond might be a little bit better than some of its competitors, as far as water storage, which is our main concern?
In two thousand and nine, we created Chapter Eight, the Storage Chapter. In creating that chapter, it was important to have the, our project, which is Temperance Flat, qualify for it, so that, so we have that in the current legislation. It was important for us to have enough money to actually build the thing, and so we have that kind of dollars. It was important to have what we call continuous appropriation in it, and what that means is this, once the voters vote yes to fund it, then the money has to go to the projects, versus going back every year to the legislature, for the legislature to decide whether they want to fund it or not fund it. Continuous appropriation, i- i- is simply put, is this way. The state would provide up to fifty percent via the bond to build the dam, the other fifty percent has to be by the beneficiaries, which could include the city of Fresno. So, those beneficiaries will have to go out and secure another billion and a half possibly of dollars. First question the bank's going to ask you is, how, how, how guaranteed is your money from the state of California? If it's continuous appropriation, that's guaranteed. If you say, "Well, we'll have to go back every year to see if they want to fund us," that don't work for the bank. So continuous appropriation is critical so that you don't have times where the project stops, because you don't have money. You never want to start a multi-billion dollar project not knowing you can have it start and end. So, so those are in the legislation, the, the, Henry's has the cleanness back to what we negotiated in two thousand and nine, that's why I'm telling you that it, it gives us what we need.
Thank you. All right then, I am going to, we're running a little bit behind, so I'm going to read a few segments of the resolution, and then make a motion to, to vote. Whereas, said resolution noted that the city of Fresno would specifically benefit from the, this bond through funding to enhance local water supply and reliability, including above-ground storage projects such as the Temperance Flat Reservoir, whereas enactment of the principles included in the Clean, Safe, and Reliable Water Supply Act of two thousand fourteen would provide funding for programs throughout the state to increase water supply and reliability, address ecological problems in the delta, add operational flexibility to the state's water storage and delivery system, aid disadvantaged communities with water quality problems, and expand water recycling and conservation, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Fresno as follows. The city of Fresno does hereby support Assembly Bill twenty six eighty six, the Clean, Safe, and Reliable Water Supply Act of two thousand fourteen, to the city of Fresno, in recognition of the interests expressed by the California Legislature to reexamine and revisit the water bond, does hereby inform Governor Brown and members of the Legislature that the city of Fresno will not support any water bond that fails to contain all provisions in the current Water Bonds Chapter Eight, including but not limited to three billion in continuous, uh, continuous appropriation funding to develop new above-ground water storage. Three, the city of Fresno further does not support a modified water bond unless it unless it retains the $2.25 billion provided for by the current water bond in its Delta Sustainability Section. Four, the city of Fresno further does not support a water bond modification that lacks adequate funding for regional infrastructure improvements and development, including means of meeting the ever-growing challenges faced by disadvantaged communities throughout California in dealing with and resolving water quality problems. And finally, six, the city of Fresno asserts that such water bond provisions and funding levels are crucial for sustaining water supplies in the public interest and for economic and social good in the Fresno County region and all of the state of California. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt this resolution this afternoon. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any other council comment? Let's vote, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Erica, and thank you, Mario. Now we are on to an item that was originally scheduled much earlier as well. It's a presentation of the kiosk program by Healthwise Services. Welcome you to council.
Thank you very much. I've taken the time, and you've all taken the time to meet with me, and I appreciate that. And I'm going to discuss a little more in detail about the kiosk program that Healthwise has implemented and has been a tremendous success to many of our neighboring communities, one of which is Clovis, which I've enclosed a letter in your packet, saying how they've enjoyed the service, how they've benefited from the service. Just briefly, in the month of February, we hauled 90 pounds of needles out of Clovis alone. So, and that's just two kiosks, and they're one-fifth the size of Fresno. So why is this a need? One in five Californians are diabetic. And when you go into the Hispanic, more populated Hispanic areas, it goes down to one in four. So that's approximately 125,000 Fresno residents that are diabetic. Now diabetes is not the only reason that we would do home injections, allergies. As some of us are aging, there's hormone injections and so forth. So there's many reasons why someone would do... I wasn't looking at you. So there's many reasons why one would have needles at home. And often you hear, "I don't know what to do with them." And so many times, they're disposing of them improperly, and there's two ways they're disposing them. One, they're putting them in the trash can. This creates a problem. We all have people that, no matter where you live in Fresno, we find somebody going through our trash cans. This creates a problem. People are getting a hold of needles and medication and using them for the improper reasons. Another way is they flush them down the toilet. So this causes contamination of our sewer lines. The city of Reedley, how they decided to go into this program is they had a clogged sewer main. And when they went in to clean it, they found a bunch of Sharps needles commingled with other items. Now, not only was this a huge expense for the city to repair this, it was also, could have been a huge working with comp issue. The other issue is the pharmaceuticals. Now pharmaceuticals is anywhere from a vitamin, children's aspirin, to OxyContin. And again, people are disposing them improperly. How they flush them down the toilet, again contaminating our sewer line, or putting them in the trash can. And a lot of people, not even thinking about it, put the whole prescription bottle in the trash can, which causes another issue of identity theft. Now, the kiosk program is set up, and how I'm proposing that it's set up for the city of Fresno is that we start with one of each kiosk. We have a pharmaceutical kiosk, and you have the brochure that shows them, as well as the Sharps kiosk. And I'm proposing that we have one of each in each council district. This making it convenient for every Fresno resident to use it and use it responsibly. Where I propose and where other communities have is that we either put it at a police station or a fire station. Therefore, it's, they're watched, you know, there's always somebody available as far as watch, and it doesn't, you know, people are less apt to mess with it. They are approximately 350 pounds, each kiosk. Each kiosk, they were originally designed to go in national forests for people to dispose of their food, and so the bears couldn't get a hold of it. So they're grizzly bear safe. So some communities request that we bolt them to the ground. Some communities say, you know, if they want to try to haul 350, you know, once it's filled up, 400 and something pounds of needles or medications. You know, the Healthwise maintains the kiosk, so if somebody decides to vandalize one, the city simply calls us and we replace it the same day or within 24 hours. Now, with everything, there's a cost. The costs are real simple, and they're very feasible when you break down the savings you're making in the water treatment and landfill fees, contamination of garbage. They are $1.75 per kiosk with a once-a-month service. Some communities require more than once a month. Some communities require as many as once a week. Each additional scheduled pickup after that is $1.50. I usually recommend to communities, if they're doing weekly, that they might want to look into just getting another kiosk. Because obviously, there's a need. The city of Clovis has two. They want to do more, they just haven't found the spots for them. So right that, I'm going to leave it. It's a very simple program. I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Casey. This was scheduled as a workshop, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I scheduled it, so I should know. So we're not going to vote on anything today. And so it's really a little workshop for council, so we don't normally go out to the public on that. Councilman Baines, you're up first.
Yeah, thanks, Casey. I don't have any questions for you, but I do for Bruce. This was interesting for me because about a month ago, my mother-in-law, who's diabetic, came and stayed with me for, I don't know, a couple of weeks. And I was probably on the heels after I first met with Casey, maybe either right before or right after, I can't remember. Anyhow, not knowing anything about the issues, of course, of my household for the most part with people that use syringes and whatnot, well, I was literally having to, we were collecting Sharpies in old soda, you know, 2-liter soda bottles, because I wouldn't let her put them in the trash can, because normally, I asked her what she does at home. She said she just dumps them in the trash, flush them down the toilet. Almost exactly what you said, and she injects two, two or three times a day. So obviously, a person with, that's using at that level can rack up several syringes in a household. So I was just wondering, Bruce, in light of that, I experienced it, and I, which is why I was interested to see how this workshop would go. I didn't know what, I honestly didn't know what to do with all of, all of, you know, we probably have 40, 40 or 50 needles in kind of a container. But at the end of the day, I said, "Well, all we can do is put them in the trash", you know, so I'm a major violator right here, and it...
And you're not alone, if I can interject. Many times, I find myself, if I find out somebody is a diabetic, I ask them, "What do you do with your needles?". And they say, "Oh, I put it in a coffee can or a soda bottle."
Yeah, right.
And then you, then I ask, "Okay, well, once that's filled up, what do you do with it?". And then, most of the times, they try to change the subject, because they don't want to tell you, "I dump it in the garbage." But that's the reality, they don't know what to do with it. One couple, Sanger, called me after we implemented the program in Sanger, and was thrilled because they had a closet full of needles, and they didn't know what to do with it. When the grandkids came, they were always nervous that they were going to get into it as grandkids do.
Yeah, sure.
And so that is a real issue.
And that's why we put it in the container we did, because I was worried about my granddaughter getting a hold of them, so we put it up high and whatnot. But point being, I was just wondering, Bruce, have we contemplated maybe some type of kiosk program throughout the city? Is that something on our radar? Because I lived it, and I had no clue what to do.
It got on my radar about a week ago.
Okay.
I was on vacation, you know, there was attempts to have a meeting. We met yesterday, have a better understanding of the program. Mr. Schuber was here. I think what would have to go along with, if there's a desire to, for staff to look into implementing such a program, maybe on a pilot basis for a two-year period to see how it goes, we need to work on some kind of media outreach, some kind of public knows. Because while we can place kiosks
Yeah, if nobody knows.
Within council districts, we've got to make sure that the public knows where these are at and the service is now available.
Right.
And nothing against our, you know, Public Utilities Department, you know, mailer that goes with the bill. I don't know if that has the, hits the target as far as getting the notice out to the community. So if you could give us maybe a couple of weeks, I'll work with the attorney's office and with the department and with...
No, no, that'd be great. And really, that was really kind of my, you know, my only request was if we were going to look into it. And I have a firsthand experience with it where, you know, I was the guy that didn't know what to do with all of these. So it seemed like, you know, because of that, I said, "You know, I think there's some validity here, maybe we should look at it." So anyway, thanks, Council President. Those are really my remarks, just to see if staff was looking into it. Thanks.
And Mr. Redd, they do, other communities have put it in their utility bill, a notice, and giving the address of the locations, and that's where the success has come from.
Councilman Capriolio.
Do, what is our current system of disposal for Sharpies and medications?
Well, I'm sorry, I was...
Our current system for disposal?
I think it was, as council members just pointed out, I think people are just either flushing the pharmaceuticals down the toilet, throwing them in the trash, and, or in some cases, depending on where you're at, they're just tossed on the ground. In some parts, as Sharon carried, you've picked them up in your district, if you walk in an encampment or anywhere near an encampment, you also walk very gingerly. So some people are, think, as responsible, I think, as they think they can be. They're putting them in a bottle, or they're putting them in some kind of container, but they're putting, it's, they're ending up in the waste stream. And then once they get to the sorting, to our transfer facility or it gets out to the landfill, it still provides or creates the same potential hazard as it would be if they were just thrown out on the ground somewhere. There's somebody who could potentially be injured by these things.
I understand that you can dispose of needles and meds at hospitals?
No.
Emergency rooms?
No.
There's absolutely no place in this city?
You cannot dispose of them at doctors' offices, hospitals, or pharmacies. They will not take it back. And I've actually have tried to work with the local hospitals to have kiosks there, and the response was until the state mandates that we do, we are not interested.
And then the source of funding? That'd be around $4,000, $200 bucks, huh?
It's about a little less than $30,000 annually. So I need to work with the solid waste division as well as the wastewater treatment or wastewater division to see if that's a cost that can be absorbed within their operating budgets, unless you've wanted to offer up infrastructure funds, but I doubt that's going to be an option. So I'll work with the, I'll work with the enterprise.
No, no general funds, right?
No general fund.
Perfect, thank you.
I don't think the police department's offering up any funding for it.
Screen is clear.
Free to host it. Yes, and we appreciate that.
And council, you should be, you know, you talk about the inability to take it to a hospital or a pharmacy. There is legislation that is trying to make its way through in Sacramento that would require pharmacies to do that. I'm sure they're going to incur a cost, and, but at this point in time, correct, there is no alternative other than just to...
And the pharmaceutical companies have been fighting that for about two years now.
Which means it could be another two years before.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I think it, I think that was just stricken, didn't pass again or something, is my understanding, that...
Yeah, it didn't pass.
It didn't pass, right? The pharmacy, Walgreens and that, or they're not mandated to do this. So if we're going to do it, we've got to do it at this point in time.
Exactly.
Jerry, I want to, so what happens? Somebody fills up a 2-liter soda bottle with these needles, and then they, but they finally throw them in the trash, and then that ends up in our landfill, and, or what?
Good afternoon. That, that does happen. We also see a lot of them at the household hazardous waste events that the county has twice a year. But they only have them twice a year. So Councilman Baines was talking about putting them, storing them. We do have people who store them for quite a while, and then they end up taking them to those events. But the materials are hard to dispose of, and they do not take RX. They don't take pharmaceuticals, that's just Sharps.
And one time, when I was on a tour of a waste facility, there was a lot of processing for recyclables, and people going through these recyclables. I imagine this stuff could be dangerous at some point.
It can be. I used to run a transfer station in the Bay Area, and Sharps were always a concern. They're something that you worry about. Typically, what you do is you put engineering controls in the, in the transfer station so that you have magnets that are prior to people physically hands-on touching things, so that it can pull those, pull those Sharps and any, any sharp object out of the waste stream prior to it being sorted through by hand. But that doesn't stop everything, you know, that's, you can, you can have the best engineering processes, but it doesn't necessarily stop everything.
Thank you.
Sure.
Casey, I have a couple of questions. So, and you really cleared this up. In the other communities where it is working, and you've put in the kiosk, you sent, did you send out a flyer then with the utility bill, or?
What I, what we've done in other communities is that I've worked with the city, and we've put a, in the utility bill, a statement just giving the location of what they can draw, and, you know, pharmaceuticals and Sharps. And each kiosk is clearly marked where they should be, what should go in what. So, yeah, we work with as far as the utility bill.
You put those two right next to each other? Like if we did a District 2, a police station in District 2, we would put those two kiosks right next to each other? And then we would publish the information, that's the place to go?
Right.
And then you guys collect that stuff, and then what do you do with it?
We collect it. We have a microwave incineration system, so it uses no water. And we're proud of that, being that we are in a drought community. And it's 100% kill, and then it is shredded and destroyed and taken to the proper landfill.
Oh, all right. Special...
Exactly.
Special place for needles, got it?
Exactly.
Okay. You have, okay, Councilman Capriolio.
Just one more. On a kiosk, is there a way to divide by two and have half of it for Sharpies, Sharps, and half for meds?
Oh, for one kiosk? By law, by state law, no. They have to have separate.
By distance, or quarter-inch steel plate, or?
One kiosk for pharmaceutical, and one, because they're marked, and you can tell they're color-marked too, for, by state law, that has to be the way.
Casey, thanks for all of this information. Pretty strong, considering that we've got a living example with Councilman Baines collecting these things and not quite knowing what to do with them. I'm sure that's what every person in our community faces. What, you know, what do I do with this stuff? And so without having an alternative, they flush them, or they put them in the, in the trash, and they become a hazard somewhere else. So, thank you for visiting council today.
Thank you for your time.
All right. We have just unscheduled communication left, and then we will have closed session. And so let's do any unscheduled communication at this time.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. My name is Dave Herb. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I would like to confess that last week, when Councilman Quintero outed me and my wife about the event we're holding, the 100-year birthday party for our home, he so surprised me that I forgot my manners. And I'm taking a moment here this afternoon to make it clear that you are all invited to the party if you have the time to attend. I know you get hundreds of invitations for social events, so it's an offer, not a request. But if it works out for you, the party is next Saturday night, designed to coordinate with the Historic Preservation Week. It is no accident that we scheduled it on that day. It seemed appropriate. It is from 5:00 to 7:00 in the evening. We're going to have a little barbecue, a little bit of music. And we're going to have foxtrot lessons, for those of you who don't know how to do the foxtrot. Foxtrot was invented in 1914, so we thought that would be appropriate. Sir, if I could ask you to, copies of our party invitation and my business cards, if you have the time, and don't have a better offer, I hope you can join us.
Thank you, Dave. Good to see you again.
Likewise.
All right. All right, now we just have, I believe, closed session?
That's right.
City Attorney, do you need to read what we're going to do?
Yes, we have conference with labor negotiator concerning all of the listed bargaining units, and also a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation in the Willis versus city of Fresno case, and there may be an announcement after the closed session.